All right, yes, all right. This meeting is now called to order. Here she hop along is making her way here.
I have a walking boot on, so I'm a little slow tonight. I'm sorry. Councilor Johnson's gonna be a little late. I had not heard from Councilor Corey, but everyone else is all present duly noted.
Thank you.
There's Patrick.
There's Patrick. All right. Nice. Councilor Corey last I heard was enjoying the sunshine somewhere, so I don't know if he still is or not, so. Now, here he comes, all right, let's get, ready for the applause? Ready? Ready? Here we go. Regu- regu- slow clap, you wanna go slow clap? Where are they? Oh, now they're waiting. Come on, guys, suspense is killing us. All right, all right.
Call the meeting to order.
Okay, the meeting is called to order, here we go. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. There you are, all right. Oh, oh, good, well, hopefully that's, that's good, hopefully that's a good thing. All right. All right, review of the council agenda and meeting, do we have any comments regarding the agenda for later on this evening? At seven o'clock, anyone? Hearing none, staff, no? Okay, hearing none. All right, the financial statements, and is that you, Mr. Zook, is that you?
I don't have anything to add other than the report to council action. If there's any questions, I can entertain them, and if I don't know the answers, I'll get back to you.
Questions, anyone? All right, hearing none, let's move along. The council priorities workshop, and you should've all received both, you should've received the city manager's report, I believe it was, on the priorities. So shall we launch in?
So, mayor and council and the rest of the staff, I apologize on the one for just giving, getting you these PowerPoints today. We just really have been working, just didn't finish them until today. But the, what we hope will happen over the next two, three hours, whatever it is, is to go through in detail the priorities that we have right now. And there's a few of them that have been completed, and we'll show those or, you know, drop off the list. But we're, what I'm hoping is a very candid, take our time, question-answer period, which each of the directors that deals with the goal, so we can get some sense of putting together a budget that matches where you're wanting to go for the next budget. We're starting generally with the idea that we keep the same priorities with, like, two changes. And then that in the fall, and this can be, you know, late summer, it could be July or August, that we come back in a goal-setting session and you'd set the priorities or your goals for the next three years. There's a lot of detail, and when you were just, for the new council members and the mayor, when you were coming in, you were out there and you were hearing it, you're reading stuff. This is really the chance of, that we've asked the directors to say, you know, look and see, what are the questions you're not asking? So that we can make sure that all of us have an understanding of the priorities we have. With the council members that have been here for quite a while, we'd ask that if you sit there and say, "Oh, staff forgot to ask this question," or put that out, that we would cover that tonight in that priority. The, the goals that are listed here, or the priorities, are not listed in the same order as we had before. I picked out the ones that I think I need and we need guidance specifically and understanding, and then moved to almost the last priority, then gets Matt doing a, two things. One is to lay out the financial health of where we are, where we're projecting, and then we can talk about options in the budget that we'll bring back, you know, within the next month or so. If that makes sense. So, would like to start out with streets, which is, just about everything you're talking about tonight is general fund, with the first, with the big exception of the streets, which is the first thing up. So, where's Jay? Oh, and Corin. So they're, they're gonna tag team. You wanna go up there in the front, right in front of everybody, take your stuff, please?
Can I ask just a quick question? Where's this found? Is it in our packet at all? Do we have access to it?
I, I just emailed that to you earlier today.
It's also in the iLegislate, it should be in iLegislate, you just need to hit the refresh.
Here we're talking about priority number three on our program, correct? I think.
At the end of this, you can prioritize what you want, but for tonight, I put a different order so we could get guidance, in case we don't get to the very end.
It actually does.
Yeah, I was saying it's locked down.
I've got, I can do it soon.
Good evening, mayor, council. So I'm here to talk about the goal of repair and maintain city streets and sidewalks and secure funding. There were several strategies and actions that were underneath this goal, determining the desired level of service of, of the streets. And the council determined that the desired index was to maintain the current payment condition index at the time. Determine the condition of city streets and sidewalks and estimate the cost of repairs. Here's a map of what that looked like. The street condition report was completed in September of 2016. The report indicated that the current PCI at that point, which is, again, payment condition index, is 73. This report will be updated every four years. We're in a program where we're doing the arterials and collector streets every two years, and then the local streets every four, to keep this, this information up to date. Here is a map of projects that we've done. This is a, a year behind now, this is 2013 to 2017. These are all projects that we've touched in one way or the other on the pavement side, whether it's just cracked ceiling, cracked ceiling and slurry ceiling, or complete pavement redo on these projects. So strategy number three was develop and approve a financial strategy to fund this. And the transportation utility fee was adopted by the city council in June of 2017. This came out of a lot of work for, with the ad hoc committee that met several times and recommended the council, the transportation utility fee, which would cover about half of the needs of the city, again, to go back to maintain that PCI index of 73. And then additionally, the, the state also implemented some additional gas tax funding that we can use to payment, for pavement and sidewalk repair. And then we did come back to the city council in February 2018 to talk about what other options might be available to, to close that gap in the funding, and the council at that point decided to defer any additional funding till we get a couple more years of the program under our belt, figure out exactly how, how it's all playing out and where we, where we land. So, strategy number four was produce a five-year schedule of street restoration, repair and maintenance. A project list in December of 2018 was prepared for five years. And we started implementation of that plan last summer, and we're continuing forward. That's based on the current funding that we have available. And one thing to note is that this, this plan also informs what we're doing in our, all of our underground utilities, water, sewer, stormwater. Because we wanna get those all taken care of before we go and pay. We don't wanna pave and then turn around and dig up the streets because we have to repair a piece of pipe. So, what you'll see when we come, I come back to you in April to talk about the capital improvement plan, you'll see a lot of projects that got pushed forward in those other utilities in order to ta- to address the need. So this pavement is really setting the tone for where we're spending our other dollars in the utility funds. And then to note, the strategies and actions repair, related to the repair and maintenance of sidewalks have not been completed. Those are actually a responsibility of the adjacent property owner. And the council determined that the efforts of the code enforcement program needed to be focused on responding to complaints rather than proactively going out and inventorying where there might be issues or concerns. We have made strides in repairing and maintaining the sidewalks that are under our jurisdiction, so adjacent to our properties, we're taking care of those. And then additionally, as construction occurs, we are requiring sidewalks adjacent to those sites be repaired and, and/or installed, for that matter, if they don't exist today. So that's where we are today. If there's any questions?
Questions, folks, I've got a, anybody, no, actually, a question or two, Corin. So, the, the, I know on the sidewalks, but how does that work with having safe routes save, for instance, from Friends View to the Cultural Center or downtown?
Yeah, that, mayor, that's a, actually, kind of a, I see it as a different issue. The goal was to repair and maintain sidewalks, existing sidewalks. You know, obviously, another concern is, is adding to our sidewalks, providing those safe routes. And what you'll find, again, when we talk about the CIP, is that we're adding additional funding into those, into that section to start looking at those, making sure we're hitting those critical routes. One thing I will note is that since 2007, we have installed 86,000 lineal feet of sidewalk. So that's quite a few lineal feet. Now, a lot of that is in subdivision construction and, and new locations, but there's also gaps that are being filled as we speak. Again, as a, there's a requirement in the Newburg Municipal Code that if somebody is doing a project over $30,000 on their site, they're required to install sidewalk. And we're implementing that as we speak. So, as projects are coming in, we are requiring people to, to install sidewalks where they don't exist today and/or bring the ADA ramps up to standards.
Did I, did I hear that there's separate money for ADA ramps? Is that?
There isn't separate money for ADA ramps. There's, 1% of the gas tax is supposed to be sent, spent on sidewalks and, and then by relation ADA ramps. We are spending, we are spending some of the pavement, the transportation utility fee money on ADA ramps because we're required to. Though, anything, when we do anything more than just crack and slurry seal, we have to actually bring the facilities adjacent to those streets up to today's standards. So we are spending a certain percentage of the money that is dedic- was indicated for payment, and we did talk about this at the council when we put this into place, we are having to do ADA ramps as, as we go forward.
Patrick.
So, so I know part of the street utility fee was that a portion of that money was gonna be used for streets that were needing reconstruction. During those reconstructions, what you're saying is that sidewalks are part of that program, right?
ADA ramps are, not necessarily sidewalks.
Okay, so that would be at the corner of the?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then, Corin, and I, I think I just learned this recently, so I obviously need to share, but, so, did, is it true that Joe Citizen can go online and look at the roads that are slated for repair? Is there something like that?
Yeah, there, on our website, there's currently the five-year plan.
Right.
What I'm gonna tell you in a minute is that we're updating that plan because it was, that was last year's five-year plan, and we update that every, every year. So that, we're finalizing that right now, what that next, basically, we're adding another couple of years onto that five-year plan. So we're finalizing that, we should have that ready in the next two weeks or so. So, once that happens, again, I'll bring that map to the council on April 1st, and it will be up on the website. But the, today's current five-year plan is up on the website.
Thank you.
Mike, yeah, Ms. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment, not a question, for the new councillors especially. The reason why the council decided to keep it at the present PCI level, the 73, is funding. And it was tied in with TUF at the time, so we kinda, you know, said, okay, to keep the current funding, we need this amount in the, in the TUF. So, just for your information.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? And I'm, I'm sorry, this is my, this is my topic. I, I will say this, that as we move forward with the budget discussions and the unknowns that are going along with the general fund issues, if we are gonna have to go out and ask for more money from the public, the last thing, you know, that I, I wanted personally, and I think a lot of my neighbors would want, is that we hit 'em with a transportation utility fee, then we hit 'em with a gas tax or some other source of funding to fix sidewalks and, and other streets. Not to say that those aren't a need, but from my point of view, I'd rather see where we are with the budget and keep that in mind as the tax burden on different people in town, you know, whether that's folks that are living down here, or living up in foothills, or, or living, you know, over in Springbrook, and making sure that we look at the tax burden we're putting on everyone in a holistic manner. And as far as I'm concerned, streets, I mean, you, you go a block this way and you can see that we still have an issue with streets. However, I feel like with the street utility fee, we've stopped the bleeding. What I would like to say, though, is that I, I will still advocate for this, simply because I do not believe it's fair to charge everyone in town $5, and people with new streets are getting their streets fixed, you know, to a higher standard than the people on this side of town who need street rebuilds, they're paying the five bucks too, or the people who have gravel streets. So, it is a very complex issue and one that I think is gonna take a long-term solution to come up with. And I'm afraid that the city took this off of their radar, and this is an area that we just kinda took the state gas tax money and just made it work, and that's how we got in this situation. I feel like we've taken steps to make sure that that doesn't happen again, but I would like to leave this as maybe a secondary goal or even a, you know, one farther down the list, as a, as a nice-to-have, once we know where we're at with the budget and where, where our revenues are coming from. So, that's just my, that's my pitch, so, thanks.
So, some potential strategies and actions as we move forward through the budget cycle. Again, as I noted earlier, we're actually, have somebody on, on call to go ahead and, and do the reviewing of the arterials and collector streets and get us additional information on that, and then the local streets will come in another two years. And we'll continually update that report, and we'll be bringing information back to this council every year on that information as we receive it in. The transportation utility fee will be reviewed by the citizen rate review committee, and that's in the, in the ordinance to, for them to review it every two years to determine if that rate needed to go up or not. And again, I'm, we haven't looked at it yet, but I'm not proposing that it, when we go in the fall, at least at this stage in the game, I'm not looking to propose that we increase that fee at this stage in the game. And then the five-year schedule of restoration, as I noted, we're working on an updated one, because, again, it's a rolling average. And then, as I noted, it, it also informs what we're having to do for the water, wastewater and stormwater. So, in fact, one of the projects that we were planning to pave this summer, we were planning to pave Sixth Street this summer. But we have a sewer project that we need to replace the sewer pipe. It's clay and falling apart, and it's got brick manholes, and so we need to build that through the summer. And so we're gonna move that pavement money somewhere else for this summer and then come back the following summer to rebuild Sixth Street. So we're having to juggle some of the streets in that scenario. Again, as, as most of us know, most of the pavement in the older area uptown is, is pretty bad, but unfortunately, so are the pipes underneath this, that pavement, so we're, we're having to strategically look at what we're doing. And as Councilor Johnson said, we are still looking at maintaining the good streets, and that, that's deliberate. You know, we don't wanna let them get to that point, so we're trying to keep up on that maintenance, that lower-level maintenance that we can do to keep those streets healthy while we go in and take care of the ones that are, are in really bad shape. So, that's the goal for that. Number four would be continue to have existing sidewalks repaired as development occurs, adjacent to city-owned property, and then as complaints are received, via code enforcement, because that is part of what we do. And then, the last one is present to the council options on a sidewalk repair and program and funding, and based on what the council would like to see us do. If we're wanting to actively go to repair and replace existing sidewalks, how do we go about doing that? There are lots of different ways that that can happen, and some funding mechanisms that may or may not be an option for us, and bring that back to the city council for your people.
So, can I ask, Corin, would you explain for you and Matt, how does the bypass funding, like, what are we paying towards the first phase? Anything else, where's that money come from?
The bypass loan payment is being paid for out of our federal funds exchange, so we get, there's two different sources of gas tax funding. There's a federal gas tax, and then there's the state gas tax. The federal funds are passed through the state, and they hold on to them until we request them for a project in particular. And, but when we did the loan payment with the bypass, right off the top of that, that amount that's allocated to the city is going to those loan payments, and they're about $140,000 a year.
Yeah, it's 10 to 15 more years left on the bypass loan.
Any other questions for Corin? Awesome, thank you. Next, looks like Mr. Rux.
And the mayor, I, I was negligent, it's really Corin does all of our streets. I put Jay's name, it's like a lot of us, we get our names put on it, but she's the one who worked with the committee on, you know, just in the weeds with everyone, and we have something that has to do with streets or sidewalks, we go to Corin's.
Mr. Rux.
Mr. Mayor.
Rick's.
Mr. Mayor. Okay, so, encourage affordable housing. Ongoing discussion for the last decade, many things have happened. A work group that led to formation of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which led to the formation of the Affordable Housing Commission. And then, more recently, has been the Housing Newburg Group that met for a year and brought forward to council proposals. There were nine, over three work sessions at one council meeting. And discussed through all of those potential options, council identified for staff to work on four over the course of 18 to 24 months, this goes back to December of 2017. So we completed the first two, which was the R3 zoning and annexations in UGB. So that's the one where, if you're annexing property, we're doing a UGB, in fact, expansion, has residential land, low-density residential, net 15 acres, so you take out street corridors, so you have to provide some. We had to work through the definition of some, R3 housing. So this will give us a dispersment of multifamily housing throughout the community, which is part of the council, which is part of the comprehensive plan of being able to do that. We also dealt with accessory dwelling units, and that came out of the Housing Newburg, but also came out of state legislation. So we worked through for about eight months through that process, ended up in front of council, and that was approved, subject to changes, again, by the legislature. The two others was the construction excise tax, and then the one on what we called missing middle housing, which is duplexes and triplexes in R1. So we've had some discussion about this recently, about when we were initiating the plan amendment process for doing duplexes and triplexes. We know there's House Bill 2001, it's going through its process. One committee hearing has already been held. We don't know what the exact final look of that bill will be, but as I indicated previously, we'll track along with what we're doing by looking at duplexes and triplexes, so we won't get out in front, so we're not doing work that would be wasted, but we will start in probably April, work session with Planning Commission. Start to talk about, start getting some feedback, because I'm already getting some feedback from the public, which is kind of most ends of the continuum. We did House Bill 4006, so this was the Cosford rental homes. So we have 28% of our renters within the community who pay 50% or more of their income towards their housing. So, we had to do a survey, we had to do a community meeting, which we did back on December 18th, 2018. We had to submit reports by February 1st, so we pulled all the information together, wrote up all the notes, and got that stuff submitted to our DLCD and Oregon Community Housing. But that is an annual process, not the community meeting, but every year we have a new reporting process that we have to go through, and that has to be done by February 1st. So, putting in some new protocols about how we track that in our permit system, because we've gotta track down to ADUs and what status they are, has been approved, is it under construction? The, we also applied for and got the, the grant for the housing needs analysis, and so that funding actually was tied to House Bill 4006. So we're in the middle of that process now. It will be completed by the end of June of this year. Echo Northwest is our contractor, we actually have a community open house on February 27th in this room. Everyone's invited. Our consultants will be presenting information, so we'll be looking at the buildable lands inventory. We're going through the draft of national, statewide, regional trends. And I can say that a preliminary, very preliminary number is, over a 20-year horizon, from 2020 to 2040, we need right around, a little over 4,000 additional residential units, based upon our population projections. So the question is, is where do you put 4,000 units over roughly a 20-year period? So more to come on that. Tiny homes has come up, we actually, conversations started with Joe and I and Matt Mellor at high school over a year ago, as the students were talking about building a tiny home. Been to many seminars, the rules and regulations are convoluted, complex, contradictory. So how do they work? So if it's on wheels, it's a R version, it's an RV. If you put it on a foundation, it's a home, it's gotta meet some structural building code requirements. You know, we change, then it could be ADUs. On a property that's got a primary residence, but they're a tiny home, they may only be 400 square feet. So it depends on how we look at that, but we're hoping that there will be some clarity will come out of this legislative session on rules for tiny homes. Recently, you heard about recreational vehicles, length of stay, and some ambiguity in the code. City Attorney and I talked briefly about that, but it's another one that's on the list. And then, there was manufactured homes, so that came up post the comp plan zone change on Illinois about protecting manufactured mobile home parks. So I've gone through, I've been to the Affordable Housing Commission twice, we've been to Housing Newburg. That report's coming back to you soon with recommendations of those two groups, and you can give us some further clarity on that. Housing on religious institution sites, so this is one of, is there an opportunity for faith-based organizations to provide opportunities for additional housing? Actually, we'll be meeting with one organization this week to kind of further that. Joe and I've had a conversation with another faith-based group. And then, of course, there's the 2019 legislative session, and there's all kinds of bills that are related to housing. It's kind of like the housing session in 2019, and so we'll have to, and we are tracking, monitoring what's going on.
Yes, sir.
So a general comment here, in the slides we get up here, all of your directors you have here, they work really hard. One of your most difficult thing is going to be, it's not by accident, Doug sitting up here, his department has, you know, almost fifty percent of the task up there. And there are things that you, you care deeply about all of them, but I know you care deeply about a lot of the things we do. We talk about burnout, community development department and with Doug. So that actually was one of the tasks you gave me, say, don't let that happen. And, and I'm trying, he's a workaholic, but at the same time, so part of these discussions as you go through is look and see what his department, they have a tremendous capacity. We get that and there's a lot of pride in doing this stuff, but when, when, even when I look at things and go, oh, why can't we, can we look at this and that? That's all of us have to be just really aware. If you're talking about prioritization in the list, I don't think overall the priorities we have is too large of a list, but what really needs to happen is to look at each individual and who's getting kind of tasked with that. So this is one of those areas, you did set a priority of like the list was, how would you say, eight or something?
We had nine plus an alternate six, then we added in the H N A, we added in the recreation of vehicles, tiny homes, manufactured homes and religious institution sites. So the list is growing longer, so we went back and talked with Affordable Housing Commission, we talked with Housing Newberg Group. Uh, I'll give you, you know, I'll give you the trailer before the show actually happens here in a few weeks is, they said Housing New, uh, Housing Newberg said focus on the construction excise tax, missing middle duplex, triplex. Affordable Housing Commission said those two, but also you've got those requirements of H B four thousand and six and you need to finish the housing needs assessment work. And when that is all done, then come back, we'll have conversations with Housing Newberg, we'll have conversations with Affordable Housing, we'll look at the long list, they will then come up with some recommendations and I'll bring that back to you to say, okay, well, the continuum of housing, what are the next two, three or four that you want to work on over the course of the next eighteen to twenty-four months?
And I'm, can you, sorry. Okay.
We don't feel very lucky.
Theoretically, though, if we did come back with our priorities and fifty percent of them were under Doug's department, theoretically, we would address the staffing levels of Doug's department, correct, through the budget?
And I, just a one other comment, I mean, I think it, it goes not just to Doug who's Exhibit A, but I mean, I think that probably goes with every department head and every department, right, that we must be sensitive to that. The other thing I'll say is that like R Vs, um, my feeling is if, if we've got a particularly interested citizen or group of citizens that want to do some of the legwork for us, as we're attempting to do with R Vs, I think that's perfectly reasonable. Or, or the mayor or a counselor who's, who wants to do some legwork if there's time available. And that's not to cause more trouble, that's just to try to get some of the research anyway done, Doug.
Yes, it's, you know, housing's also come up in the community visioning, like get to later slides, and so it's embedded in a couple of different areas. It's not a singular topic on its own because it touches other things the community has identified.
Uh, Doug, just a couple of questions. Um, one, you said you were tracking, you were doing a lot of tracking, do we know how many A D U's we currently have in Newberg?
No.
Okay, great, thanks.
But we are tracking over the last year of starting that.
You're starting that process, so we don't know?
I can't go through and tell you how many we have, I can tell you what we did in twenty eighteen.
Sure.
Again, it gets to staff resources and time of, of being able to allocate, somebody get out in the field, drive, walk around, try to identify every A D U.
Sure.
Sometimes an A D U, you know, is upstairs in a garage and, okay, that's pretty straightforward. Sometimes somebody's backyard, we don't have access, we can't see it.
Sure. Do we, so how many did we do in two thousand and eighteen?
Uh, twenty eighteen, we did three.
Okay, that's great. Can I do a follow-on? So you said in twenty twenty to twenty forty, we need over, a little over four thousand units? Is that in addition to the ones that are currently being planned or is that more than the units that we currently have right now?
Uh, it's fewer than the current units, single family and multifamily we have in town. And so as we go through the housing needs assessment process, I know, because I get questions, everybody likes to get to the end, we know what the answer is and we're back at the beginning trying to get all the data put together. I'll, I'll be able to answer your question more clearly next week.
Okay.
When we get kind of our, our final draft of a buildable lands inventory and then we start to look at what our needs are. Because we've got it, we're going to have a process to go through and look at our split that we have today between single family and multifamily. So think in, in one definition, multifamily includes everything, a triplex and above. In another definition, it includes duplexes, but building code says it's one is to single family. But we've got to look at the split that we have now and there will be decisions the council will have to make towards the end of this project. And we'll give you briefings as we go along to say, do we want to shift that? Do we want to have more multifamily and less single family? But as I was talking with the consultant, I said, you have to remember, we have specific plans and or master plans with development agreements, in the latter case that we're kind of locked in, we got a contract.
Right.
And so we're going to be able to go change that stuff without going back and changing all of these plans and then you have to have willing property owners who want to do that.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess, I don't know if this is the appropriate time for this or not, but Elise and I were on the phone talking about homelessness in the county this afternoon. And, and I don't know if in this encourage of affordable housing, if we can include something at least to, some attention to those that are houseless or homeless. Can we, can that be? I mean, again, I'm not asking for a specific action, just more that we be aware of our role in that countywide as well.
I think that's one where it gets added to the list.
Okay.
Uh, for consideration after we finish up the next two, if we continue on with the C E T and the, and the missing middle.
Okay.
Did you know of anyone interested in building? The USDA just released a bunch of funds for homelessness in Oregon to build housing. Great. Oh, no.
Okay. So the next one is the urban growth boundary. So a little background for our new council members, the city attempted to do an urban growth boundary expansion. Uh, it was focusing on employment land. Uh, it went through a long process, a lot of time, a lot of energy, a lot of money. Uh, ended up in front of L C D C, was going to get remanded back, uh, with a whole litany of issues to consider. Um, council at the time, we went into mediation with, um, those that were contesting that proposal, ended up, that was not successful, we withdrew from mediation, we withdrew our application for U G B expansion, we withdrew our application for urban reserve designations and stepped back and recalibrated and started over again. All the data was old, was worthless anyway. So while that was going on, the state started, was given direction from the legislature to create a simplified streamlined U G B process. So we participated in that. Um, that ended up getting adopted. Uh, Newberg, we got a grant from D L C D for thirty thousand. We matched it with in-kind staff time and we went through phase one of the Division Thirty Eight process. We finished that in May of twenty seventeen. Uh, we found a variety of problems with the administrative rule. We went back to D L C D and L C D C, got them to put it in their work program to do some technical fixes, did not address the bigger policy questions that we had raised. Those got adopted in January. Um, so the consultants are now using the technical fixes and we're back doing that analysis under Division Thirty Eight. Um, so we're in phase two. Phase two is supposed to be done by the end of June of twenty nineteen. Um, so as the slide indicates, that's going to put us in a position to come back to you this summer and say, okay, do we continue on with Division Thirty Eight? Or do we scrap it and go to the traditional Division Twenty Four U G B process? Uh, as we go through, we're finding some additional technical fixes that need to occur. We've still got the bigger policy issues. L C D C has said that hopefully those will come up in their next biennium to address. Um, so in the meantime, we have a growing population and where do we put people is the long-term question. So the work and data that we gathered under the Division Thirty Eight is not a throwaway, it's, it's useful information. And so we were back at the housing needs analysis, we're doing that, so we'll figure out what we need for a twenty-year period for the housing side. But there's another provision and that's an economic opportunities analysis. And so that's looking at the employment side of the ledger, your commercial and industrial. And the information we have in our comp plan is, uh, goes back to two thousand and four, so it's pretty old. Um, so we try, when somebody says they want to come through in a comp plan zone change, I mean, we've had to go through and track, okay, what developments occurred, what master plans have been adopted, we've got a kind of a running table. But it really needs to be updated. So we're proposing to put in the budget, the fifty-five thousand dollars to go through that process and do, and prepare an economic opportunities analysis. So if we stay with Division Thirty Eight, we still need an E O A. If we don't stay with Division Thirty Eight, we definitely need an E O A because that fits into the Division Twenty Four process. Just keep it, keep in mind that, you know, in a fifty-year period, twenty sixty-seven, we're supposed to be over fifty thousand, that's the projections, over fifty thousand. Those numbers get updated every three to four years. If we look out to, uh, twenty forty, we're, you know, we're supposed to be around thirty-six thousand in population. Um, so state land use system, we got to plan ahead. We've always got to plan ahead, we've always got to plan ahead.
One thing, I'm just, I'm looking at the time and we're at quarter to six, we're, and we want this by seven, right? And I'm seeing a large stack of paper. So I don't know if we want to, I mean, okay, so the next topic here is the Riverfront Master Plan. I don't know if we want to just do a high-level review and, and ask questions as needed. I'm just, like I say, I'm a little worried we're not going to get through the pack and if that's, if that's all right.
Okay, Riverfront Master Plan, we're in process on that. We've had two community meetings, we've had multiple citizens advisory committee meetings, they've selected alternative E to advance forward, that's when we're going to be doing the, um, cost analysis on all of the infrastructure. We anticipate, we're supposed to have the project done in June, um, but we're not going to make that, so we've talked with T G M about extending it likely out into August kind of timeframe. Um, I think the key part of this is that the, the approval of a, of a master plan, not a land use decision, but a plan, is that it will lead to a series of comprehensive plan, development code, comp plan changes on property and zone changes on property. And so there's a whole work program that comes after adoption of the master plan itself.
On the Riverfront Master Plan. Okay.
So community visioning. Uh, so this is the council goal, so this is to establish that twenty-year vision. The, oh, I missed the economic development strategy, didn't I? Man! My bad. So we have it, we have a strategy, we're, uh, coming up, April will be three years, that plan has been in place. And we, we've done some retooling at the committee level on this, kind of simplify it, knowing that it's come out as a topic area in community visioning to talk about economic development. And so we're going to use that process to update the strategy overall. We've shortened it up to say, okay, what things can we focus on over the course of the next nine months and be successful at? We've got the opportunity zones, we've got the mill site for redevelopment, uh, we got the downtown plan, so we've initiated things there to move that forward. We've got our intersubject zone program and I mentioned the community visioning, so there's a lot that goes under economic development.
Mayor, so on part of this one and, and I know we're, we're stretched for time, but we aren't, I, I think we're going to be fine and then if you're still willing to go into the business session of some of this. But I think with the West Rock discussion going on, one of the things that I think that there's two ways of looking at this. One is how we, and so this has to do with workload. How do we engage and try to either convince West Rock to redevelop or to sell? And how much, you know, how much effort do we put into that one versus another one that says, well, if we don't think, and, and so I'm looking to our council president to articulate this, the other one is that, look, we don't own it, we don't affect it, and so are we burning our energy in trying to, you know, are we spinning a wheel trying to deal with that? So I would ask Mayor, you're kind of, have that conversation now, at least a little bit, so we can work through and see if there's issues or there's perspective.
Thoughts on, uh, our friends with West Rock, folks? Well, I'll, I'll, I'll lead in. When, in my opinion, it's, uh, well, if they're listening, I find it morally reprehensible that they've done nothing about the property that's been sitting there for now since twenty fifteen. I'm sorry. Um, and I think it absolutely is our future if we're talking about the expansion of both economic land and possibly a multifamily land, I see no better place than on the river, to be honest. Um, so for, I, I mean, whether or not staff can do that, I've said to you, I've told you, Joe, that I will do what I can to try to move West Rock, but how to move a Fortune Two Hundred company is really, is the question. And that's what, um, you know, I think we need, I think they at least need to know that, um, that it's not, it's not justifiable just to have it sit. That's my, that's my two cents on the subject, so, anyway. Yeah, well, that's the question, is what leverage do we have, if any? Um, and I think, you know, they've, uh, update, so, um, and I don't know that you all know, but we've talked to both the mill, the Koshaktin, Ohio, where they closed the mill at the same time, um, that one, they actually turned around and sold, um, and is now being redeveloped. Um, the one in Connecticut that they also closed at around the same time, um, they have not, they have not closed, or they did close it, but they have not redeveloped it because they've got liability for a dam upstream from where they are, is what I understand. Again, that's from the, from the cities there in those two communities. So why they've chosen to leave Newberg, um, sort of hanging, I, I don't know. But, um, you're right, but we don't have leverage, but by the same token, we're doing a Riverfront Master Plan when we don't own ninety percent of the land. So it's, it's, again, it's, it's a bit of a challenge, right? So Patrick. Stephanie.
I just, I know, um, in your report that you said that there were maybe some updates on the West Rock, I was just wondering if there are any, is any, any updated information on talks with West Rock? And I would also echo the sentiment that, um, I think it's clear that they don't have an investment in our community, that they have let it sit there, not only because we lost a bunch of jobs and we've lost the, the resources there, but I, I would guess that the impact to the businesses around this town, because those people are not working there, is high and it's probably something we don't have a measure for, but I would suggest that the businesses in our town around that have suffered as well as the people who are no longer employed. And I do think that, um, clearly they don't, they are not invested in our community, I just wanted to say that, but also ask if there's any update on what their thoughts are.
So I don't want to take anything from the council president and what Denise, so, and I also, and I'll also get in trouble if I say too much while things are still in work, but let me suggest this, is that, um, and there's no secret that there, there are buyers, real buyers for the site. And that's been no secret, we won't name them, but they, but they've been vetted to the extent that Doug and others have talked to them and they have the capability of doing the work. One of the, the big issues that always comes up is, you know, what's still buried out there? So it's been a mill for 100 years. The good news is, is that we have a water plant there. And there has, at least to this point, there's been nothing that we've caught in terms of, because we do water testing, that's shown that there's some leaking that might be in, you know, the, the water flow out of that area. Still could be, you know, and with that many years, there's likely there's something. So then, so that's a good news. We would love for them to have a, you know, a level three analysis done on there and we can see, see what it's, what's going on. The other part that is a little bit of a, a change or an update is that as we look to other places around the U.S. with West Rock and others, we look that there are mechanisms in California, we, we have them in Oregon, and the Pearl District is probably the best example of them. But in other places, particularly like in California, they have community development corporations, which are separate bodies. They, they're akin to what we might have as a, an urban renewal district, where they bring public and private parties in. They are primarily used with affordable housing projects, but they have been used at industrial. So we've reached out to those and said, how did you work with a company either that had a brownfield site or maybe unwilling to sell initially? And there are other experiences where large companies have either taken an equity position. So they took advantage of something being redeveloped and they, they made some money off of it, or they limited their brownfield liability. And they do that with state governments typically, with cities being involved, and these community development corporations. So we've reached out to them and talked to those folks. And the first thing that they recommended back to us is talk to tax attorneys that you might have in your state that, and we've engaged a couple to get their advice to how could something be crafted that would be accepted to the West Rock, might be accepted to our congressional delegation, and acceptable to other parties, whether it's the union groups who are there or people in town of doing trades. And so there's people that, after we've reached out, have said, we're interested in continuing to talk to you. And that was the update of an attorney and some other tax folks to say, ah, we're intrigued by that and we'd like to talk more. And I don't think I've given any specific companies, so I don't get myself in trouble. Doug continues to be and has to be our, our sole voice out of the city when dealing with, with businesses, brokers, and West Rock, so they don't get mixed signals from us. Clearly, the mayor is going, and he'll tell you about, next week, he's going to Washington, DC. We're hoping that maybe there's an opportunity on that trip, which was, is about the bypass, that we might engage some folks about West Rock.
All right. So given that, are you looking for direction? Patrick, did you have something before I?
No, go ahead, no.
Okay. Are you looking for us then to give the nod to go forward with West Rock work? Is that what we're asking? Or, or did you want us to go through these and, and chop one and leave one, or what, what are you looking for?
I'm looking for the council president to have a discussion of another point of view.
I am only one person. And I was not speaking as the council president. I was just speaking from my own 10 years of watching plans and goals and things that people spend a lot of time working on and we spend a lot of money on. And we're doing it on something where there's a lot of opposition. The owner of the property being number one. The unions being number two. I mean, we have a lot of opposition. And if we can't get West Rock to say that they might be willing, because when we spoke, they weren't unwilling. Well, if they're unwilling, we are wasting our time. If they're a little willing, then maybe. I could understand. I, that's my neighbor. Do I want it to be something more than an empty mill? Of course I do. I would, I mean, it's an empty building. It'll have rats or stuff in it. I certainly want it to be something more, but this fighting a battle that you can't win and spending money and money and money over a pipe dream is a ridiculous way to spend your time. So unless you have something concrete to, to tell me that there's a chance that they might listen, then, okay. But other than that, it's a waste of time.
Patrick?
I think I'll jump in now.
Please do.
The, I have five points. The first one is, the really difficult piece of this situation that we all know is we're talking about urban growth boundaries, we're talking about employment lands, we're talking about where Newburgh wants to be in 2050, 2040, pick a number. How can we realistically plan our future if we have no idea what's going to happen to that property? And today, we don't know. And not only we not know, it's not looking great. And part of the reason I ran for city, city council was urban renewal. Well, that's on hold. So to me, that, that whole piece of it is just infuriating. Now, is that a staff effort problem? Is that a political problem? What, who, where should, if we're going to attack this mountain of a problem, how do we do it? Now, we just heard from Joe that we have a community development department that's already kind of redlining on what they can accomplish with the workload we've given them. High achievers, but also, you know, high chance of burnout. My number one concern about the mill property and sitting down and just thinking about this holistically is DEQ and if there is a brownfield there and if it's impacting the river, and if at some point it could impact our environment of living here in town. That's number one for me, okay? Number two would be the, the redevelopment and what we try to do with that property or what we try to partner with anybody, West Rock, somebody who buys it, whatever, so that way we have a viable industrial, affordable housing complex out there. I don't want us to have a, what made me have incredible concern about this situation and kind of agreeing with what Denise said is that we have staff who are looking at, and, and people in the community and myself included, looking at that as an awesome opportunity and wanting to help determine where Newburgh goes. If that's not moving, we're putting a lot of effort and a lot of emotional energy into, into trying to get it to move. And I, I guess what I would ask is that, and listen to what Joe said tonight, maybe we can put together a coalition of people, kind of like we're doing with affordable housing, with the Chamber, with Business Oregon and our, what are they called? The Regional Solutions People. The, the city, obviously the county, and maybe even somebody in the governor's office to help to try to put more pressure, you know, maybe, I don't know if there's such a thing as a DEQ audit, but maybe that's something we should ask and see if they can do some testing out there from a state. Because we are concerned that those buildings are causing a public health hazard at that end of our community. And then going from there and seeing what kind of support we can get to assist us to put more, more push on it. I, I don't want to say we shouldn't work on it, but I also don't want to burn a lot of effort into something that we're not going to be able to move, you know, that is for things that are out of our control. We talked to the West, the mayor, Rogers and I talked to the West Lynn mayor about some other issues, and this came up. And, and he had some great ideas. And so it's not, what I would ask is that it's not just a staff thing, it's an us thing too. And maybe we need to start making phone calls and saying, hey, look, this is, I live next door. We, we need to do something about this, even if it's just leveling everything and making it to where it's not a public health hazard, so.
Okay. Mike? Yeah, I, I, first of all, I'd, I'd like to say, I totally agree with what Denise had to say. That was perfect, and that would have been words that I would have had to say. But I also wanted to reiterate that, in my opinion, right now, where we're at, we've got a corporation that could care less about getting rid of that property. And talking to them, you know, doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make sense to spend money and to have staff time involved with a corporation that could care less. If somehow they could tell us that, okay, we're very interested, we have a buyer, we're very interested in these people, sell it for a buck, or, or make, make some kind of deal, you know, that, historically, these kind of properties in Oregon and other states sit. They, the corporations walk away and there they are. They're an eyesore. It's all over the place. You can see it. And Newburgh got stuck with one, in my opinion. So I, I don't think we should put any more time into the master plan at this point because that is a big portion of the master plan, of the Riverfront Master Plan. Without having that, then the, the Riverfront Master Plan is half of what it should be. So I, I would say I'm not, I'm not behind any, any more negotiation or talk or anything with the West Rock people.
Okay. If I, if I could, so this is the knowledge of 40 days, I suppose. And so I was in on the meeting, the last meeting that we had from West, I'll, I'll put it this way. Aside from some staff time, I, I don't know what money we're spending on West Rock. And maybe you can inform me what we are. I've seen a red, a letter written under my signature to West Rock. We had a meeting, and I myself have made calls to these communities. I'm not asking for the staff to do anything. But I also, on the other side, I think it would be absolutely negligible if we did not do something to try, whether it's community-based or not, to try to get them to do something. I, I don't think we can sit there and look at it. If, if we want to look at spending money, the Riverfront Master Plan, when we did not own the property, when the mill was idled, you know, that was some spending of some money. But I understand that was grant, grant money, right?
So, yeah, so what we have is a TGM grant. So we got a $205,100 grant. So we have a contract with the state to move through and to prepare a master plan for that area. I'd have to go back and look in the contract, but often those contracts have, if you don't fulfill our side of it, we have to pay money back. We probably, so far, have, there's been probably around $150,000 of, $160,000 of state money, state and federal money, that has already gone into the master plan. The committee, when they met, and I think this is important, said, move forward with alternative E. So it does identify some future changes to the West Rock property. So there's an area identified to be mixed employment. There's an area that could be some high-density housing. There's some future roadways and trails. In the conversation we had with the committee was, you, the master plan sets the stage for all these things that you want to have happen, just like we did downtown. We didn't run out and all of a sudden, you know, have $25 million we could go spend. We started doing the low-hanging fruit and we'll keep plugging away and finding money to make improvements. So as an example, I gave to the committee was, well, on the west side of the master plan area, we have one property owner who wants to have property up zone to R3, go from medium-density R2 to high-density R3. We're talking with some other property owners that are commercial, and this study shows we don't need all that commercial land, and changing theirs to medium-density residential. So there's things that we can do in the fall that starts to implement that master plan. And yes, 115 acres of that study area is owned by West Rock, but you can have a master plan that sets the stage for when something does happen, and I use the analogy, one end of the continuum. West Rock chooses to sell the property, company X walks in and says, hey, we're negotiating, we're going to buy this property, we want to redevelop it. What do we need to do? I sit down and say, here's the master plan. We did all this work back in 2018, 2019. Now, you've got to go back and refresh some of it, but what you would need to do is you need to annex, and then you need to go through the comp plan and zone changes. And here's your zoning, and here's all the uses you can have. And so we primed the pump, so to speak, for something down the road. In the utopian view, you know, could you walk in this fall and take care of all of that on that property? That would be great. Likely going to happen? I don't, not this fall, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. With that Riverfront Master Plan, though, you do have to have somebody that owns that property to have input for the Riverfront Master Plan to be completed. It can't, in my opinion, it can't be completed until somebody has that property and is on board with the Riverfront Master Plan. Otherwise, it's going to be maybe chaos or something when they, when somebody does purchase the property and whatever. If they're not on board with it, they can do whatever they want. You can't order them to, you do this, you do that. They have to be on board with it, is my point.
We've had mixed messages. And the mayor's heard this, you know? I've talked with people who are representing West Rock, who have told me their ideas of what they wanted to have happen. And that is integrated and embedded in the master plan. Can you adopt a master plan over the objection of a property owner? This council can, or you can choose not to. That's a decision that's going to be coming forward to you in August. It's going to go to the Planning Commission, they're going to develop a recommendation, and it's going to come and it's going to land on your lap. Couple of meetings ago, I said, I'm bringing all the hard stuff. Easy stuff was done years ago.
With that, is it, given alternative E, and I know we're going to see it, is it safe to say that the committee that went through the options envisioned redevelopment of that property at some point?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I, I think that that, if the committee that we entrusted with this work and that we've done this time said that it would at some point be redeveloped or restarted, I suppose, I would think for us to disregard that would be going against the will of those who put the plan together. Is that fair to say?
I have some points on that.
Sure. Fire away.
One, at the time that that committee was brought together, there looked like there was a really good possibility that everything was going to work out with West Rock. So there was that. The original, you know, yes, they're at the table, it's for sale, we're talking to the broker, there's people interested. And then it went down pretty quick from there, in my opinion. And I, and I sat in on those meetings. The, that was not community-led work at all. It was, it was consultant-led work at the very beginning. Then it developed into community work, but with the, kind of the consultants and the community. And, and that's why I lost interest, because it was the consultants bringing stuff. And that's not, that's okay, and that's good, because they're professionals and these people weren't, but they were, they were working with some concepts, but they brought those concepts. So that, that's fine. But to say that the, the committee, the, the committee had, already had the idea that West Rock was going to be sold, because that's what was happening at the time. So that's not really fair in that sense to put it all on the committee like that. But I certainly think we should finish the part of the master plan that doesn't involve the mill site. I mean, you're going to put something there. But my problem with that is, doesn't it, if, if I'm looking for a piece of property and you've changed the zoning, you're going to, as the zonings change, it changes who the interested buyers are. So I guess what you're saying is if we change the zoning to be what the Riverpl, the Riverfront Master Plan is looking like at the current moment, you're targeting a certain type of buyer.
I think I would respond this way.
You can disagree with me.
No, in part, I'm going to. So the, the vision elements that are coming out of the Riverfront Master Plan actually started with stakeholder interviews, the ideas. So in that part, it was not consultant-led. It was input we were getting from identified stakeholders that started to set these themes of things to happen. Yes, I agree with you that at the time, the mill was for sale and there was a process At the last CAC meeting, I explained to them that we had alternative D and alternative E. And D basically took the West Rock property and just left it as it is. It was just, it's all industrial, and the little piece that was commercial stays commercial. The committee said, no, let's overhear the commercial, half of it commercial, half of it high-density. it high-density. Over here, take 15, 20 acres, turn it into mixed employment, variety," and we talked about what mixed employment looks like, and keep a big balance of it, keep it as industrial. Now, out in the marketplace, when I've talked with developers, they like, the ones I've talked to, that I reached out to, like that, it gives flexibility. But on the other side, for WestRock, if they chose in hypothetically, five years, say, "We want to reopen the mill," the master plan that's being developed does not stop them from reopening that mill. So, it's trying to strike that gentle balance between property owner desires, community desires, and how can you put something together that addresses the community needs but sets the stage for something in the future. Again, hypothetically, somebody came in about the property five years from now, they could say, "Oh, we want to amend the master plan." I'd say, "Fine, okay, file an application, we'll go through a process, and we'll modify the master plan. Other than that, here's what the community said in 2019, this was their vision of what they want on the river." Think of it, plans are not static, they're dynamic, they change over time. Look at the 2002 Riverfront Master Plan. It never went anywhere. And so, here we are in 2019, now we got a new bypass, now we've got some development activity that's actually occurring within the Riverfront Study Area, that didn't happen for 17 years.
Mr. Mayor?
All right, now, yeah, yes, Stephanie.
I just, you know, I don't disagree with the idea that WestRock is who they are, and they're going to do what they decide to do. But I also think that I have a responsibility to my constituents to tell big business that they're not allowed to walk into my town and decimate jobs, and leave a huge resource, and walk away from it. So, we may be David in the fight, but I don't think that means we walk away from the fight, especially if we have plans, and we are looking at years down the road, how our community is going to progress. We need to put some pressure on big business coming in here and doing what they do, and I don't think we walk away from saying that that is not right, and we won't accept it.
Well, let's see. I agree that we don't want to spend, you know, throw good money after bad, I get it, and I understand. But I think there are, hopefully, are mechanisms in place that if, if there was to be an expenditure, say hypothetically, we decided that we wanted to pursue a research as to what the environmental condition was there. I would imagine that expenditure would have to come before city council, or at least I would request that it would have to. So, I think that's a built-in control. I'd also like to think that if there were any other studies to be done, or anything like that, that there, anything involving anything more than a certain amount of staff time, that we would have some kind of check or a break on that, correct? Wouldn't we, even if we've got it? And I think if we didn't have it in our goals to do something, can even think about WestRock, I think we would be negligent. Now, I'm not saying to spend any money, I agree. Can, would it be all right with you all, as Patrick said, to again try to form a coalition of people that are interested in the future of the mill, and use a minimum of staff time? Yes, okay? Anybody? We're okay with that? Is that enough direction, do you think? Yes, Doug?
Yes.
Sort of kind of? Okay. All right, is that all right? And so, we will try to do that. Again, because I mean, like we say, if I'm going to be in DC, and the subject of the closed mill on a river happens to come up, I would hate to be muzzled and not be able to say something. So, anyway, so that kind of thing. Yes, Mike?
Just one, one comment on that.
Sure.
I don't mind doing that, but we have to be careful. We've had a whole committee meeting over the Riverfront Master Plan, and I don't want this committee to be meeting separately, this person, and then now they don't know what they're doing, each other are doing. I think either the Riverfront Master Plan Committee should be the one doing that, or if you choose someone, they should have the Riverfront Master Plan folks in with them.
Okay. Yeah, good point, well, point well taken. I, you know, I don't know, once the, the Riverfront Master Plan Committee will disband, right, after their task is done?
After this work is done, so, in August.
Okay, in August, they will disband, okay. And I think Patrick was alluding to the fact that it could be outside of the city jurisdiction as well?
Yeah, so, what I was, basically, divide and conquer, I want to work smarter, not harder, on this particular goal. If Pat was king for a day, we'd finish the Riverfront Master Plan, and we can debate about how we handle the WestRock piece of that, when that comes up. But going forward, you know, then we don't have that Riverfront Master Plan Committee, we have a coalition of folks who are interested, because the state's going to be interested if it's employment lands, because that's more income tax. The county's going to be interested, we're interested, because of the property tax, and because of the, and so, I'd like to see a coalition and talk about how to strategically go about climbing this particular mountain. Yeah, what's the first step? I mean, for me, it's, it's safety, but for the group, it could be something else. And just simply taking those steps as they come, kind of like we did with, you know, streets, and like we're doing with affordable housing. Come up with a list and start working a list, you know.
On that note, yes, I would be happy to work towards bringing people together for that. Anyone else here, would any of the rest of the councilors like to be involved? Patrick? Okay. Liz B., yep, Stephanie, okay. All right, so let's do that, and we'll reach out to the community. Let's start with that, and we can start with the folks that are on the Riverfront Master Plan, and draw people together, including some of you all in the room who might be interested in the future of WestRock. Please let us know. And then we'll, we'll try to do that, and bring people together from all of the, you know, major employers, the schools, Portland, everybody else. So, there we go. Yep, 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 and the union, et cetera, okay? All right, sounds good. Anything else, Mr. Rux?
Yeah, next. Community visioning. So, this was a council goal, to move this forward, so a 20-year vision, and then an action plan that comes along with it. And so, we've identified the topics that have come out of stakeholder interviews, discussions with the community. Words might change a little bit as we fine-tune, go through these processes, there's always some wordsmithing that occurs. But it captures the intent and the information we've heard so far. So, this one's going to be completed in August of 2019, so Bio, our rare participant, and his contract ends, and he will move to something else, I'm not sure what it's going to be yet. But the key piece of this one is this community visioning sets the stage for about three years' worth of work activity to update the comprehensive plan, the Development Code Regulation, for the city's portion. So, don't think community visioning's done and it stops. Their, council will have to have a conversation, do you establish a new permanent committee that oversees this community visioning process going forward? Or do you, as a council, choose to take that task on and put it on your shoulders, with all the other things you've got going on? So, so far, we've had our first community kickoff open house. Committee has met four times already, we did 40 stakeholder interviews. The big one that's occurring right now is the community survey. So, you can direct them to the city's website, to the community development page at planning, and Rosa's pushing stuff out on Facebook, and so, that will end on March 5th, but this is the way to take those topic categories with questions, and have the community start to give us feedback. Because one of the things we talked about early on this, don't hold meetings for people to show up, get out to people, and they're rotating where locations and meetings are going to be held for the Citizens Advisory Committee, and where are different forms and so forth, so they won't be at the same place, different quadrants in the community. So, that's what's going on with that one. And then the last one is transit. So, in October, Hame Hill County Transit Area adopted the new transit plan. You have tonight, it's your regular business session, and action to basically adopt that plan. But what's embedded in there, when you read through the three different sections and the hundreds of pages, is there's actually tables that identify where there needs to be Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and Development Code updates, as well as Public Works in Design and Construction Standards updates, in order to be able to implement that transit plan. So, that's, again, some work that's coming forward, and, you know, Joe and Jay and I have been talking about a transit area downtown, that's in the plan. We've talked about the new routes are going to need signage and shelters and so forth, so there's coordination that needs to occur in order to bring that plan forward, and to have ability for people in the community to be able to access transit, to get goods and services and jobs. I'm done.
All right. And Patrick and Elise, you both are on the Transit Committee, correct? No, you are, Elise is, Patrick's not. Got it, okay. All right. Questions for Doug? Nope? All right, thank you. Dave, are you heading up? Does anybody feel the need to take a five-minute break, or?
Yeah.
online, schedule inspections online, things like that. And there's also a mobile component that turned our field workers into having the application out in the field with them. Another one we did is CarGraph OMS. That was an upgrade to a system that is Public Works Inventory and Work Order Management System. And that also has resulted in more field-connected personnel, so now they have tablets working out of the field. And we did a number of IT security upgrades as well. Current projects, we're just wrapping up our phone deployment. In fact, we just handed out our last one today. And so now we've got some other work to do for the police department. They've got, they're going to be able to use their phones to talk on their radio network when they need to. So that's the last piece of that that we'll be deploying. We're doing a desktop migration from Windows 7 to Windows 10. And we are working on building up a disaster recovery site. The idea there is if we have some sort of natural disaster and we lose our equipment on-site, we'll have a backup set of equipment at another site that we can fall back to and continue working. One of the proposed projects that came out of our long-range plan was an upgrade to our Internet site. Internet is like an internal website for employees to use. The current one we have was built in 2006, and the software we use for that is no longer made or supported. So the issue we have is if anything happens to our Internet right now, it's done, we can't bring it back. We're currently using it for templated documents. Some departments are using it as a wiki, as a knowledge base, things like that. We discovered, in talking to departments, that everybody would like more capabilities of this site. And because of that, we came up with a solution called Microsoft SharePoint, which is probably the market leader in internal websites for businesses. And the budget cost of that, back in 2016, was $50,000 to build out the site. Due to budget constraints, that has not been funded to date. So what Microsoft SharePoint does is internal website and document management system. It has team-level sites, so like the police department could have their own Microsite, and the library could have their own Microsite. They don't have to see each other's information because they do different things. There's workflows within those. We can have an external portal for communications with citizens, or contractors, or consultants, anybody that we're doing business with. It identifies department-specific needs such as electronic purchase orders. Our purchase orders are paper-based and take longer to route, and we don't know the status of them, things like that. Same thing with our time cards. We do time cards on paper and rodded around, so we're a little behind the times there. Yeah. Yes. And the legal department has requested a case management system, and so we figured out, using SharePoint, we could create that for them. Sharing files with external entities that are too big to email, we have a lot of those, especially like an engineering department, things like that. Or they'll have a consultant that they'll hire, and you need to trade these documents back and forth, and we really don't have a modern way of doing that. Project management system and document management system, so versioning control and things like that. Yes?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you say SharePoint, did you look at other solutions for that, too? Or did you just kind of?
We did.
Okay, great, thanks.
So a big advantage of SharePoint is through our licensing, we already own it. And so the cost is really building it up. You know, if you look at our external public website, the software that we use to operate the website is actually free because it's open-source software, but the city spent $50,000 to have that built because it's so big and complex. The next proposed project I'm going to talk about is replacing our network equipment, both wired and wireless. So most of everything that we have was put in service in 2007. And I would say a good shelf life of this equipment would be 10 years at the most. To date, we've only made some minor upgrades, and it's really been where we haven't had a choice. So we've upgraded firewalls due to security concerns. And we had to upgrade our voice router to coincide with a dispatch 911 phone system upgrade, so we really didn't have any choice with those things. Most of our inventory is end-of-life and end-of-service from the manufacturer. What that means is they won't support us if we have an issue with it, and they won't offer replacement parts. So that puts us in a bad situation if we have something go down. We're looking at the gray market like eBay to purchase parts. On our more important things, we have some spares on hand, but that's really a Band-Aid. Another issue is in our 2018 SEGA audit for new councilors. SEGA stands for Criminal Justice Information Systems, and we have to comply with their security mandates, and they audit us every three years. A lot of the security upgrades we did in the last three years is a result of failing a SEGA audit in 2015. So this year, when we had our SEGA audit, we were in a much better situation as far as compliance goes, but we have one audit item, which is our network equipment is not encrypted. And back when we purchased the equipment in 2007, encryption wasn't really an option. We began requesting incremental upgrades through the budget process in 2016 in order to avoid a larger capital request, but we're at the point now where we can't do that incrementally, and we'll be requesting $200,000 for this equipment to get replaced.
Can I ask a question really quick?
Yes.
And I should know this because I was on the Budget Committee, but is there no line item for depreciation of equipment in your supplies per department?
No.
And if so, why haven't we added that? That feels like something that's like a very standard practice of budgeting.
Yes, the only place we have been successful in like setting aside money for future replacements is MDTs in police vehicles.
Yeah, because typically, you can, I mean, not to sidebar here, but typically you can trade in different equipment if you do it within X amount of time, if you buy in bulk. So can we put that as like a side note to address depreciation? So that we're not in this situation in 10 years from now?
Typically, we are using this equipment for a long enough span that we don't have any trade-in value of it. Like the equipment we have now, it will go to our recycler. And in fact, if I have to buy a piece of equipment for one that fails right now, I would probably have to go to a recycler to purchase it from them. And then, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I guess that's just not the practice I'm used to with any sort of equipment. I mean, I understand that, I mean, it's the same thing with a car, and I know we've used that analogy with the city as well of why we buy newer cars so that we can have trade-in value.
In the past, we've, when it's been tight budget, which it typically is, we don't have the room to do that.
But I guess I would rather spend $10,000 a year than $200,000 in one year.
Yes, well, you know, the long-range plan that we did in 2015 was essentially doing that, where we're going to spend a little bit of money every year, but then we get to the budget process, and it's so tight that it doesn't make it in.
So this is not an attack on you, but for us, I feel like that's a very standard practice of any business to have depreciation included in a budget.
Okay, so some police technology projects, again, these came out of the 2015 long-range planning process. And the first one is e-ticketing. So e-ticket, well, so how the police department writes citations right now is on paper. And e-ticketing would be good because it would speed up productivity in the field, it would reduce or eliminate mistakes made by the officer in the field, and then it would eliminate the need to manually enter the citation data into both the police database and then the court database. So that ticket, after it gets approved in the police department, has to be entered in by a dispatcher by hand, and then it gets routed over to the court clerk and then gets re-entered by hand. So if they're electronic, if it's electronic data instead of paper-based data, I could just inject that, inject that straight into their databases, and that would actually be a pretty big time saver. The next one is body-worn cameras. This has been a request from the police department for quite a while. There has been some improvements in technology that make it more of a possibility. A couple of years ago, the issues that police departments were seeing is complying with public records requests. So there was a couple of cities in Washington that deployed body-worn cameras, and then they had citizens that were requesting all body-worn camera footage as a public records request. And then it was a pretty big burden on their records staff to go and edit out all of the stuff that they have to edit out. So now there's some automatic technology-based solutions that'll automatically blur somebody's face or their ID or HIPAA information or stuff like that. And so it's still an unfunded request. These can get pretty expensive. I think one quote that we have right now would be about $40,000 a year. And so that's, I don't know if a cheaper option is available, but the desire's there, but it's just, you know, we're talking about $20,000 worth of network equipment. It kind of falls in that same conversation. And then a CAD and mobile upgrade. Our current system is several years old, and so we're working on upgrading CAD and mobile. And that's computer-aided dispatch and mobile server, which provides communication from dispatch center out to the MDTs and the patrol cars.
So during the Budget Committee process, are you, is someone going to come forward from each department and present these projects, proposed projects, and how much they cost and what it would impact the budget?
We'll put cost in each of them. You're hearing already that, and we'll specifically cover equipment replacement, the whole depreciation with MAT. Some of these are big, high-ticket items that you see up there, which is why they weren't in some of the past budgets, so we'll bring those as alternatives. A few things, we don't have big costs to them, like some of the e-ticketing and those. And this was a higher level because we've not really sat down with you and talked about technology in the past to this detail, but now we'll put some numbers to it. It isn't creating any more money in the budget, but we'll cover these and we'll show you some alternatives. There was another system, if you, would you cover what the C Click Fix is and when that's coming on, if you knew it, or have Jay do it?
C Click Fix is a citizen engagement tool. We currently have a, I don't remember what the name of it is, but what it is is it's a component that allows a citizen to, through our website, report like a pothole or an issue with the street, or it's geared towards Public Works. It does get turned into citizens reporting issues for just about anything, though. So C Click Fix is replacing the existing product that we have as part of the OMS upgrade that I talked about. So they're just moving vendors from one to another.
That's a big difference for the public, short, but they're just waiting for the train in Public Works and then we'll move that.
Does anybody else have any other technology questions?
I just want to say I don't want to get back where we were before when we let entire programs just fail and firemen had to put in, type stuff and scan stuff into a different system for, I mean, that's where we were. We did that.
Well, what Counselor Bacon is referring to is we've had some pretty tough times where technology replacements weren't funded for a while. And so we got to the point where we weren't replacing servers, we weren't replacing desktops, we weren't replacing network equipment, and it got to the point where it was a huge capital expense. I think we spent about $600,000 because I had gone well beyond any viable sort of replacement cycle. And so we needed to upgrade servers, desktops, Microsoft software for everybody, and, you know, we made it as cheap as we possibly could. But it seems to be a stretch where we kind of defer these planned replacements for a while, and then it does become a capital item.
Anything else, anyone? Nope? Well, that's why we have a long-range financial plan, which is the next item on our discussion, as to how to handle all of these questions, right, Mr. Zuck?
That is correct. So Mayor and Council, thank you for having us here. In your slideshow, I'll just kind of run through, I'm going to tag team with Joe. For, I guess, three of you, or four of you, you've seen this before. Majority of you have not. And so Council goal from 2016 was to complete a five-year financial plan and to update, or create and update fiscal policies. So the process that we engaged was to first develop a reporting and forecasting tool. We did that in-house. We, there's multiple solutions out there to do long-range planning. And after doing it in-house, we basically used Excel because we have the expertise to do the modeling. It's very cumbersome, it's very time-intensive. If you think about the way we budget, you know, we budget down to the employee, down to the name, down to the benefit, every level of benefit. We do that for five years, so it becomes very complex. So now that we've developed a tool, and you're going to see a little bit of the output of it, now that we've developed a tool, one of the things down the radar, on our radar screen is to, you know, consider how to do this more efficiently. That kind of ties in a little bit with Dave's, things that Dave, it was not Dave's presentation, but defining the challenge and the goal. The next slide will show a little bit of what the general fund looks like. And we focus primarily on the general fund, but really the model that we built was to do it for 17 funds. And if you look at the budget document, it's very similar to the budget document. So essentially what we're doing is budgeting for, not budgeting, but forecasting for five years out using the budget format. So every single line item that you'll see in the budget document times five. And we have the ability to put in various assumptions and inflators and scenarios. What you are going to see tonight is a status quo based on, status quo projection based on, you know, current level of service. Nothing added, nothing subtracted, with the exception of a few things that I'm going to update you on that's happened in the last six months. So it has, the tool does allow you to look at different alternatives. And so we've used this tool, honestly, since Joe walked in, basically, beginning about 2017, to look at different models of various revenue streams, various, you know, various other structures. And it's flexible enough that our staff can program it to run through those. I don't have it live tonight, but we can, we have, even in council meetings, shown you, okay, if we do this, then that. And so you can see the results. We, when we began the process, we started with a committee that, in fact, Mayor Rogers was on, just to get some community input on the long-range planning process and with some of the, some input on the policies. And then moving forward, you know, one of the things that the council will have some input on is to what level do we want to go out and engage the residents in planning and prioritizing for the future, especially when it comes around budgeting. There are cities that actually have community engagement tools, and we've seen a few. OpenGov is a company that has an engagement tool that says, hey, if you have a, you know, $100, how would you spend, how would you spend that $100? You can get some input from the community that way as well, so. And then part of the process is just going back and evaluating the effectiveness. So every year we can go back and see, you know, how was our forecast? So the immediate goal, and we focus, like I said, on the general fund primarily for the last two years, is what we're showing is, you know, 1.4 to 1.6 structural deficit. And you need to look no further than the adopted budget to see where that is. The adopted budget basically was drawing down on our beginning fund balance, and we'd end up with a lower ending fund balance. And that's what that structural deficit means, is when we no longer are, you know, just spending what we're
And this was a higher level because we've not really sat down with you and talked about technology in the past to this detail, but now we'll put some numbers to it. It isn't creating any more money in the budget, but we'll, we'll cover these and we'll show you some alternatives. There was another system, if you, would you cover what the C Click Fix is and when that's coming on, if you knew it, or have Jay do it?
C Click Fix is a citizen engagement tool. We currently have a, I don't remember what the name of it is, but what it is, is it's a component that allows a citizen to, through our website, report like a pothole or an issue with the street, or it's geared towards public works. It does get turned into citizens reporting issues for just about anything, though. So C Click Fix is replacing the existing product that we have as part of the OMS upgrade that I talked about. So they're just moving vendors from one to another.
That's a big difference for the public, short, but they're just waiting for the train in public works and then we'll move that.
Does anybody else have any other technology questions?
I just want to say, I don't want to get back where we were before when we, we let entire programs just fail and firemen had to put in, type stuff and scan stuff into a different system.
Yeah.
I mean, that's where we were. We did that.
Well, what Councilor Bacon is referring to is, we've had some pretty tough times where, where technology replacements weren't funded for a while. And so we got to the point where we weren't replacing servers, we weren't replacing desktops, we weren't replacing network equipment. And it got to the point where it was a huge capital expense. I think we spent about $600,000 because I had gone well beyond any viable sort of replacement cycle. And so we needed to upgrade servers, desktops, Microsoft software for everybody and, and, you know, we, we made it as cheap as we possibly could. But it's, it seems to be a stretch where we, we kind of defer these planned replacements for a while and then it does become a capital item.
Anything else, anyone? Nope. Well, that's why we have a long range financial plan, which is the next item on our discussion as to how to handle all of these questions, right, Mr. Zook?
So Mayor and Council, thank you for having us here. In your slideshow, I just kind of run through, I'm going to tag team with Joe. For, I guess, three of you or four of you, you've, you've seen this before. Majority of you have not. And so Council goal from 2016 was to complete a five-year financial plan and to update, or create and update fiscal policies. So the process that we engaged was to first develop a reporting and forecasting tool. We did that in-house. We, there's, there's multiple solutions out there to, to do long range planning. And after doing it in-house, we basically used Excel because we have the expertise to, to do the modeling. It's very cumbersome. It's very time intensive. If you think about the way we budget, you know, we budget down, down to the employee, down to the name, down to the benefit, every level of benefit. We do that for five years, so it becomes very complex. So, you know, now that we've developed a tool, and you're going to see a little bit of the output of it, now that we've developed a tool, one of the things down the radar, on our radar screen is to, you know, consider how to do this more efficiently. That kind of ties in a little bit with Dave's, things that Dave, it was not Dave's presentation, but defining the challenge and the goal. The next slide will show a little bit of what the general fund looks like. And we focus primarily on the general fund, but really the model that we built was to do it for 17 funds. And if you look at the budget document, it's very similar to the budget document. So essentially what we're doing is budgeting for, not budgeting, but forecasting for five years out using the, the budget format. So every single line item that you'll see in the budget document times five. And we have the ability to, to put in various assumptions and inflators and scenarios. What you are going to see tonight is a status quo based on, status quo projection based on, you know, current level of service. Nothing added, nothing subtracted, with the exception of a few things that I'm going to update you on that's happened in the last six months. So it has, the tool does allow you to look at different alternatives. And so we've used this tool, honestly, since Joe walked in, basically, beginning about 2017, to look at different models of various revenue streams, various, you know, various other structures. And it's flexible enough that our staff can program it to run through those. I don't have it live tonight, but we can't, we have even in council meetings showing you, okay, if we do this, then that. And so you can see the results. We, when we began the process, we started with a committee that, in fact, Mayor Rogers was on, just to get some community input on the long range planning process and with some of the, some input, you know, on the policies. And then moving forward, you know, one of the things that the council will have some input on is, to what level do we want to go out and engage the residents in planning and prioritizing for the future, especially when it comes around budgeting? There are cities that actually have community engagement tools, and we've seen a few. OpenGov is a company that has an engagement tool that says, hey, if you have a, you know, 100 bucks, how would you spend, how would you spend that 100 bucks? You can get some input from, from the community that way as well, so. And then part of the process is just going back and evaluating our, the effectiveness. So every year we can go back and see, you know, how was our forecast? So immediate goal, and we focus, like I said, on the general fund primarily for the last two, two years is, what we're showing is a, you know, 1.4 to 1.6 structural deficit. And you need to look no further than the adopted budget to see where that is. The adopted budget basically was drawing, drawing down on our beginning fund balance and we'd end up with a lower ending fund balance. And that's what that structural deficit means, is when we no longer are, you know, just spending what we're bringing in. So obviously you can't do that forever. So the challenge is, how do we fix that? Since October, and why I mentioned October, that was the last time we came before council, and at that, that point, we were just wrapping up the end of the year for 2017, 18. And we ended up in the general fund, having a $544,000 positive beginning fund balance, higher than what we anticipated. So you kind of scratch your head, and that's the, the age old question, well, when you project something, you know, in a deficit situation and you come back with a positive, there's a lot of different reasons for that. When we budget, we're establishing priorities and authorizing a maximum level of, of service. So you have 144 full-time equivalent employees in the city. We budget for all 144 to be filled. Vacancies happen, you know, people retire, people leave unexpectedly, sometimes we don't spend all the money that we're going to get. And so that contributes towards some of that. It's varied year over year. We don't know what's going to happen necessarily until the budget cycle. One of the first steps in the budget cycle that's happening right now is department heads are estimating how much revenue are we going to bring in and how much are we going to spend? And they have that sense after seven, eight months through the year, the fiscal year, as to where that's going to land. And so that's what we're doing now. And as a result, though, of just the one, just the ending fund balance for 2017, 18 being $545,000 higher, that gives us a trickle down effect for future years where in the long range plan, the estimated ending fund balance goes up. That does not fix the structural deficit. That's just what your bank balance is, essentially.
Matt, if I could just beg you for a quick, so 18, 19, what are you projecting there?
I will answer that.
You're good.
On the slide here.
Okay, thank you.
Coming up, yeah, yeah. So since, in presenting now here in February 2019, we, we chose a few isolated, high level changes that we know are going to affect, not necessarily the structural deficit, but the beginning fund balance. So back in October, in one of the monthly financial statement reports to the council, I gave a property tax update. And as a result of Comcast, Frontier and a couple, another entity that had a settlement with the state, they had their assessed valuation lowered. And so we, we essentially, you know, anticipated X number of tax assessed value, and it came in lower. And that's, that's something that's out of our control, that's the state, that's the property, excuse me, the tax assessor in the county. So as a result of the assessed valuation reduction, that has a trickle down effect through future years. So we anticipate getting 70 to $95,000 less if everything else is static, meaning we still project our 4.3% growth. Now, not every year is going to see that 4.3% growth. In, between 17, 18 and 18, 19, we, we had a 3.98% growth, unadjusted, so. The second, the second thing we wanted to bring forward as ongoing revenue is, we, through the course of doing due diligence through normal course of business, Electric Lightwave is a company that offers telecom services in Newburgh, and they applied for a permit. And through the course of that, they had not been paying privilege tax in Newburgh. We got a one-time retroactive payment. Truman's diligence really paid dividends to about $100,000, one-time retroactive payment. But then on an ongoing budget, an ongoing basis, we will get, you know, $6,000 to $18,000 more per year. Fairly small, but it's still, it's part of that ongoing things of us looking at various pieces of revenue that we're getting, doing some audits, being diligent, and, and seeing that every little piece helps, so. And then the third bullet point is just the internal franchise fee. You'll recall that that went from five to seven. And I say internal franchise fee, that's essentially the, the amount that each of the stormwater, wastewater and water utilities pay to the general fund as, as a franchise fee. So that generated another $300,000 this year and will, and is on track to continue to do that. One-time revenue that we have received, we did, on the flip side of the bad news about the property tax adjustment, there was a one-time retroactive payment from Comcast. So every year we get, what's levied for the current year, and the assessor always continues to send prior year levies that come in with a time lag. That was $188,000 from Comcast that had not yet been paid, and now, now we got, we got that money or are in the process of getting it, so. You've heard, already heard much about the animal shelter, that settled in December. And so after paying off a loan to, to the Water SEC Fund, which was for, back in, I think, 2013, the, the net cash in hand from that sale was $35,000. And then there's also a loan component where we get $88,000 over the next 15 years, and that's, there's some interest involved with that, too. And I don't anticipate it would take that long to get, but that, that goes directly to the general fund. The, the wastewater fund also received a portion of that animal shelter sale because they had some land involved in that, so. I mentioned the Electric Lightwave retroactive payment, about $100,000. That just actually came in last week, so that's in, in the bank. And then, and that goes into our revenue and that helps our ending fund balance. Again, that's one-time revenue. We don't anticipate that year over year, so it's not part of that structural deficit conversation. The beginning fund balance in the debt service fund actually had accumulated over time due to past debt levy. And it, basically, we still receive a trickle, a small amount of back taxes on the general obligation bond for some of the buildings that we had. That bond is no longer being levied, but the tax assessor, as people, you know, pay back taxes essentially, that still comes in a little bit. So there was about $48,000, and essentially, we're applying that $48,000 towards the public safety communications upgrade, the 3.1 million that we're paying off for the next 10 years. So that's a, a small piece, but that, that savings directly affects the general fund, ending fund balance. And then one-time revenue, we have some things in the works. The Butler property sale across the street, Doug has been working through that. We had a request for interest, and Doug can give you the update as far as what the response has been. We don't have a dollar value on that, so it's to be determined. And then as a result of our transfer of fire services over to TVFNR, we had a list of surplus fire equipment that they have agreed to sell. We've had some revenue come in, there's about another $135,000 to come in, and we've been keeping tabs on them. They've got some, you can sell on an auction and get, you know, 8 cents on the dollar, but they are searching around the nation to find interested parties, and they'll pay a little bit better than that. So once that comes in, that is designated to go towards the public safety communications upgrade, so. Sources of revenue outside of our control, but we anticipate, you know, the next hotel that comes in, 100-room hotel might generate about $80,000 in, in the lodging tax, and that's general fund, a general fund estimate.
You want me to get the next one?
Yeah, go ahead.
So then the other one, we, we have the 100-room hotel, that's the one on Bruecher, so right behind or east of Fred Meyer on the empty lot adjoining Argyle. So that one is working through, it's final, you know, nothing's done deal until they pull the permits, but they're very close and it's looking very positive. The other one is, we've had interest, you know, one, the most visible one was on the, the triangle that's there at Main Street and Hancock and the railroad. And for a while, we were working with Charlie Sin to see if a hotel was going. It's not going to work out for him, but we have interest. We have the interest, a group out of Independence and another one out of Arizona that Doug's been meeting with. One of the things that we're missing right now, so this is something we'll probably come back in this calendar year, not to the next, but that I'm going to ask you for funds to do a feasibility. If you look up there and kind of think about where the deficit is at, if a hotel of 100 rooms comes in, that's 80,000, that's almost 10, you know, it's a little bit less, but roughly, you know, just below 10% of our deficit can be taken care of by outside people with the lodging tax dollars there. We have interest, but we don't have anything right now to prove that we're the right place for another hotel. We have interest. And so this one will be that would go outside, they would evaluate several sites, and then Doug would have that to be able to negotiate with people that are coming in. If we get another hotel and you get the same range, you can see the impact of lodging taxes on our general fund.
Then moving down to the future revenue within our control, these are some suggestions that, that have come up. Waste management, which is our solid waste garbage service, they currently pay 5% if that was to go to 7%. I'm just, I'm not advocating that, I'm just saying if that was to go to 7%, it'd generate about $80,000. Revenue audits, similar to, similar to what we discovered with the privilege tax, you know, and Electric Lightwave, we, we have the authority to go out and, and do audits on, on our marijuana operations, transient lodging tax, and then just those that pay the privilege tax, you know, PGE, Comcast, Northwest Natural. So performing those may generate some, some one-time revenue and then correct some future revenue as well, so.
I'll take the next.
Sure.
So in a few seconds, a few slides down, we're going to talk about the budget process and a strategy proposed towards dealing with the, the structural deficit. Part of that is built on the concept, and what you're seeing here and what you'll see on the next pages, is to diversify the, the monies we get from the city. You know, there's a general, when, to a lot of people in town, somebody says, oh, my property taxes, and that pays for, you know, everything, you know? It, it pays for police, it pays for fire, it pays for anything that government does. Well, there's a maximum on the property tax that all of us pay in the law, which basically $15. And our share of that 15 is $2.50. And so that takes care of, that's supposed to be the general fund or the general government. Right now, it doesn't come close to paying, well, it pays about 60% of our large general fund expenditures, we already know, police, library, some of the community development. So where's the other money come from? It comes from things like you saw up there, the light wave of this franchise fees that we get. So as we're proposing ways of closing this gap, one of them is to look to other fees or charges that make sense and get more people to participate in funding our government. That's all set up against what you say set our priorities. We'll give you information about how we compare to others around the area. So there's two up there, and these just, if you take them independent of that discussion of diversifying, they can be controversial. One of them is lodging tax. And so right now, we get significant dollars, like you just saw with a new hotel that would come in of what that would generate, lodging tax, a portion of it goes to marketing our community, and another portion, by state law, goes back into our general fund to help with, for example, police. That's why when you don't have enough property tax to pay for some of these basic services, there's other monies that come in. So you're going to see, we're, we're going to suggest a conversation about should lodging taxes be increased? And the second one is there just for information. Again, it's not something, because I probably will suggest some of those other above as part of a strategy for diversifying our revenue. The fourth one on the city of Eugene payroll tax, I'm not recommending or suggesting it, but it's, it's to show you and, and all of us to understand that we're not the only cities that are struggling with paying for basic services. So there are other cities, and now City of Eugene, just this last week, showed where they're going after a payroll tax to fund public safety. At the end of your packet, and we know we're not going to get to all the goals tonight, one thing that's just interesting is a chart about permanent tax levy. And I think that that's, that's also significant for this conversation of how much, because we're, we're constricted or set by state law of how much money we can ask voters without going back out for a special vote. And if you look the way we compare of $2.50, and it was just by chance of the day when that law was put in place of where we were placed. And so we're at 2.50, and you can compare with the majority of the other cities in our state that have a larger permanent tax rate. So that's just one more piece of information as we talk through the conversation. And you'll see in the next chart, it does talk about what happens if you just cut, you know, people or programs. And we'll be prepared to doing that, and that's part of our discussion.
Joe, if, if I could, on here, I don't see the CET, potential CET revenue on here?
And you've given it, so the construction excise tax has an ability for some funds to go into the general, and, and the mayor brought that up to us. I've given it, we just got it to, to do the research.
Okay, just so that if we're looking at it, that's included. Thank you.
Yep.
Just a quick update on some expenses. We've talked about revenue. Just an update on the communications upgrade. It was 3.15 million dollar project, and we financed that with, with a bank loan, 10, 10 years, 372,000. And so we're making that first payment this year, payments coming from the general fund. This, this is an update just from maybe the last month. The tower and the shelter components have been ordered, the general contractor's getting ready to be, go out to bid, tower drawings coming in the next couple of months, and a little bit more detail on groundbreaking. Project right now is anticipated to be at or below budget, and we just have been working with WACA, Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency, in the last week to get an update on the finances, and so we can give you some more detail in the future about that. But I can say that at this point, within that 3.1 million, there's been some overruns on some line items and some savings on others, but as a whole, 3.1, it'll still be within the 3.15 million, so. And Joe, I believe the WACA update was your bullet point.
Just the WACA update is about, one of the things that was with the previous council was that we asked WACA about dispatch, would they take over our dispatch? And so all the conversations have been anecdotal, but it's been with their chair and the director. And basically, what we've been told, but nothing in writing, is that they're not interested in adding us to the family of WACA. So that means of taking over our dispatch services. And one of the reasons why that was important is that you noticed up there, and just for new council members, that this is a general fund revenue, and we just had to come up with a way of paying for that. The other agencies within WACA, they actually went out on a general obligation bond. And those agencies that are members, their taxpayers are paying that from their property tax, and they don't have this 3 million or whatever their share would be. So we are going right now on the assumption that we're continuing to operate before or as we are right now without being able to look at or consider going with WACA. Our alternative to that would be to return to a different kind of collective in Yamhill County, in the Yamhill County communication system. We're the only city that's not participating with Yamhill County, but that fundamentally has a very different system than, than WACA. But that fundamentally has a very different system than WACA has. We're moving from analog to digital. Our radios are, have the ability to communicate with all of the other agencies within the metro in WACA and elsewhere. And that capability is not present in the rest of the county. So there was a choice many years ago and continue on, and it's still the recommendation that we continue to participate with WACA on our radios and then our dispatching system. And tonight, I know we're not going to get to it, and that almost is by design too. So remember, this normally would be a four-hour Saturday goal setting. And that's why Matt's here at this point to give you that financial side. The dispatch center and a few others will come up and ideally at your next council meeting during the business portion.
Just on a time check then. So you don't need anything from us regarding the priorities this evening? Are we going to delay that for the next meeting?
Yes, and I'm trying to get consensus while you're talking. And we'll give feedback if we go, this is what we think we understand.
Okay, because as, just again, just to check for everybody else, my understanding is that at this point, the proposals that you're presenting are not changes, we're merely taking off the ones that are completed. Is that right?
Correct, with the exception of kind of.
Okay, so everybody, that's the premise we're operating under. And unless there's a priority that we don't see here, that was the basis for this. If that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I clarify that we will have a chance later in the year to kind of review these again and set our own priorities as an almost new council?
Yeah, and at the next regular meeting, we'll ask you dates of what works for you.
Okay. All right. Okay, Patrick?
So I did have one that I wanted to bring up. And since we're talking about budgets and finance, I felt it was appropriate time. I'd like to get a sense from the council. Been through a number of budget processes with the city. And I personally would like to see presentations from different departments and come and explain where they are, where they aspire to be, you know, what the difference is between what they need. Like we heard from Dave about some of the different equipment needs. And those are, some of that was new information for me. And so I personally would like to see this next budget process be a little more robust. And if we have to add a few more meetings for background for new counselors and even for existing counselors, I don't think that would be a waste of time. I think it would actually help us. And especially if we're going to be asked in the next 12 to 18 months to go out and justify new revenues, I think we all need to be experts on the budget. So I was just hoping that as a council, we could agree that maybe if we add two extra budget meetings to kind of sit down and talk about police, talk about library, talk about each of these departments. So we know exactly as an organization where we're going. Not to second just Joe or Matt at all, but just to make sure that we have a working understanding of each of these departments, what their needs are and how much money we need. And so when we do actually ask for the public for money, if it comes to that, or I guess it's going to come to that, we ask for the right amount. And also, we can do things like Counselor Holloman was talking about with the depreciation and those types of different budget principles.
Anyone?
And we'd support that.
Okay, and the rest of you, council, are you okay with that? Okay, and I will say, I apologize to a certain degree for going into the depth that we are tonight because actually, thinking about it now, it's probably more of a budget thing than it really is a priority thing, particularly since we are actually keeping most of the priorities and only eliminating the couple, or at least that's a proposal. So I apologize to staff and all for that as well. Okay, but otherwise, yes, more robust, I'm all for it. I think that sounds like a great plan. Okay.
Go on. Go, go, man.
I'll try and move through these last few slides quickly. These are some of the key assumptions that we build into our model. And some of this will be repeated in the budget document, so you guys are more familiar with it. But taxes has growth value of 4.3%. We've seen it as high as 4.95, recently down to 3.98. So we have been working to tighten that, but that's a lot of work. And there's a lot of unknowns in that. So that's where we're at right now. Property tax growth of the rate itself, and I need to clarify something that was part of the conversation that Joe said. Our permanent tax rate for the city of Newburgh is 4.3827. We are levying 2.5 by charter. So, and the charter also allows us to increase 3% of that 2.5 each year. That is built into the model. That's an assumption, assumption that the budget committee will approve that. But also, employee cost of living adjustments are in the model at 2% per year, unless they've deviated as a result of past practice through a union negotiation like we just, like Anna has reported in the last few months. So moving forward, the assumption is 2%. No changes to the number of employees, 144 FTE. That's reported in the budget document. General inflation to 2% to 3%. The model allows for us to do it by line item. So some revenue goes up higher, some revenue goes up lower, some of it's flat, some of it decreases, but the average is 2% to 3%. And the status quo service levels, meaning we haven't added any programs, added any kind of proposals that you've heard tonight. So I'm going to skip the October, you'll get it. I want to move to the February 19. The only difference between the February 19 and the October is a few of the key things I've highlighted. And I specifically designed that the future four years, beginning in 1920, are identical to October because I don't have any better information until I get information from the departments through the budget process as to what this 2018-19 is going to be. And we look at through the budget process down to the Nats eyelash, really. So doing a projection at this point is kept at a high level. And the 18-19 forecast column, just about the middle of the page, reflects some of the things that I notated in the four or five slides ago that affect the ending fund balance. So the key thing is that in 18-19, the ending fund balance, according to the budget, was going to be 2.3 million. We're estimating it's going to be about 3.1 million. Some of that's because the higher beginning fund balance of 545,000. Some of it's because of this one-time revenue from electric light wave and others. And so we're estimating, and it will probably be even higher than that. I'll just tell you that the dynamic of doing a budget is that you don't ever spend 100%. We're making that assumption that we're spending 100%. So the bottom two lines are the key components of the structural deficit. The structural deficit is the line in blue. And so for 18-19, we would anticipate, we budgeted a 1.3, almost 1.4 structural deficit. The one-time revenue doesn't really help the structural deficit, but in this given year, we anticipate only drawing down a million bucks. The structural deficits in the next four years are identical to what we projected based on the budget. So the key thing in the bottom two lines here is that in the budget, we anticipated almost 1.4 million in structural deficit. That structural deficit on an ongoing basis would be about a million bucks if we did not have the public safety communications fee debt. That's something we are obligated for for the next 10 years. I believe there's early payoff after seven. So I broke that down so that you'd understand that general operations that we have control over moving forward are about a million bucks. I will point out one other thing to Counselor Johnson's comments from the October session is that I've tried to keep the numbers really clear and static. The opening slide said 1.4 to 1.6. And we were focusing so much in earlier conversations on this current fiscal year that had 1.4. We were ignoring that the range of the structural deficit goes, you know, grows, mainly because our revenues don't keep up pace with our expenses. So I just wanted to address that, sensitive to the fact that we stay on solid numbers. So graphically, this is what this looks like. And if we had the live demo right here and we had multiple scenarios, I could, you know, with a few keystrokes and the Wizard of Oz behind me, you would see those lines adjust as we decided on perhaps one revenue stream or cuts or whatever. So we've actually presented this in multiple scenarios way back about a year ago. The red line represents expenses, the green line represents revenue, the blue bar represents the ending fund balance, and the black line represents the target for the ending fund balance, which is 16% of current year's expenditures. So you can see, most importantly, that at the end of the year, this is the number that we're projected to have. And then the next fiscal year, we're anticipating 1.5, 1.6 million, just shy of what our target would be. When we get into 2021 is when we start getting to the red, all other things being equal. So that's, again, that's what the mathematical forecast would reflect. So this is just a little bit of information about general fund expenditures. How much of the general fund is personnel? 64%, $7.8 million. Materials and services is about 4 million. And about 2.5 million of that is charges to the administrative support services fund, which is made up of legal, city administration, finance, HR, all those overhead components that charge time to the general fund. You can see we have very little capital outlay. And that would partially answer Counsel Arnold Holloman's question about replacement. There has not been a robust strategy in the general fund to replace IT equipment. Other utilities, they do a pretty decent job of putting money aside. As Dave expressed, when you have compression in a fund, those future expenditures are the first to go. So the debt service payment represents the, primarily the WACA, the public safety communications project.
Matt, if I could just beg you with a question?
Sure.
So the general fund, when we talk about it, we generally talk about the expenses going through fire and library. But which, in many ways, it's just because those are the ones that do not have a dedicated fund. Is that right?
I believe, yeah, you meant police and.
Library and police, whatever I said. Whatever I said. Sorry, not fire. Sorry, not fire. Sorry, police. Sorry, chief. No, police. So, but isn't it also true that any of the administrative costs, whether it's finance, whether it's IT, that that flows at least a portion to general fund as well?
It does, that's correct, yeah.
Okay, so my hope would be that when we get to the budget, aside from what everybody's dream wish would be, it would also be, and I've mentioned this to Joe, is that we also look at what it would mean to cut a million dollars from all of the things that impact the general fund, not just police and not just library, but all of it. And that, you know, again, I think that's sort of the worst-case scenario, but what that might mean.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Real quick here, just the financial policies that we have on the table to come to you, spring of 2019. This is the list of policies, and then the summer of 2019. Some of the challenges gone into this is that best practice on a fund balance and reserve policy, we have some of the best practices, but it doesn't mean we're implementing them. With the structural deficit challenge, I'm hesitant. I've struggled to bring a policy to you that we can't meet. So what it really means is having another work session with presenting you with draft policies. The majority of these other policies are fairly, we're in fairly good standing with. But the fund balance and reserve policy is the one that's created the most challenge to bring forward and say, hey, this is best practice, but we have this challenge. So I don't want to put something forward. And I think it generates the need for some conversation, so we need to schedule that. So do you want to go into any of this here?
Sure, and I know we only have about five minutes, so I'm going to cover a few things. And some of you have already seen this of the different kinds of alternatives. When are you going to start getting these? Over the next month, two months of looking at things like, if this is the deficit and using the target of either a million, million one or million six on there, of how can we bring additional revenues in and how, what kinds of cuts or things like that? And when you do cuts, how does that translate to a service? So the two largest sources are increasing property taxes or public safety fee. And these, again, we're talking about in the general fund. There are some smaller ones, like you saw in there. You're going to see a recommendation about the franchise fee for waste management, again, attempting to diversify. Staff's opinion and mine is that there's very little appetite at all for property taxes. So we've tried to stay away from the property tax and look at other things. And we'll be doing that. And this puts a timeframe up there of going to the public, asking them opinions. And we're going to, if you just keep flipping through, you'll see here in a second. So this one talks about property taxes, public safety fee, or cuts. Keep going. Now, some of the, so kind of to help new people get a little bit of a scope of what we're talking about, if we were to close the property tax, if we were to close the deficit, there's a couple of different ways. You can do that in one year, you can do that in two years or three years. Well, how could you do that? That's why it's important about the amount of money that goes in the ending fund balance. The ending fund balance, now we're looking at about 25%. That far exceeds what the government finance officers suggest is the best practice. They look at about 16%. So what that means is it gives the city time to, instead of just going like an airplane that's crashing to the bottom, that you can then reduce that slope and fix it over a number of years. And it could be with revenues, it could be if you're, if we're going to cut in services. So if we were to cut the whole deficit right now, you can see up there of how much of the assessed value that it would take, about 75 cents on a property tax. We have a public safety fee right now of $5. There's one way to say, well, if you want to wipe out all of the debt, and this is not counting for any of those other sources. So if we came with other revenues and diversified that one, this obviously would come down. But one would be it's 14 additional, so go from 5 to 19. Well, another way of considering or looking at it is over a series of years. So that same way, how we get at the final is that you put this fee in over three years, so much per each year. And again, this does not account for any other revenues which would reduce it. I think we're just about done, just go to the last. And this will come back to you, keep going. Well, one of the charts on there talks about going to the people of ours of a vote, which we're still recommending. But it's also about, in this budget that we're going to present, we'll put money in there for public information campaign. There was talk earlier about going out, finding someone like what TVFNR did. It's about 35,000. There was talk of utilizing the Survey Monkey. We can do that. The advantage, and we can do that as in concert with other things. The TVFNR, one of the values with that one is that they did very detailed demographics of who are the voters in Newburgh. And then they met with them, had focus groups, heard them, and they actually changed some of their message and what was being proposed by some things like people thought that by going with TVFNR, they were part of metro. So there were things that they learned from the people that are the likely voters. And we'll be recommending that similar kind of approach, still doing the town halls. And that's what that chart shows about when we would do that and going out to the public. We'll revisit this along with the other goals at the next council meeting, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments for the work session? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Let's reconvene the business session at 7:35. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's bring the council business session for February 19th, 2019. For those into numerology, that's 219, 2019, right? So, keep that in mind. A roll call, please, Sue.
Mr. Mayor, all present duly noted, and to those people in the room, please eat the leftovers, otherwise I just have to pack them up. Thank you.
There you go. All right. Page of allegiance. All right. The city manager's report, please.
Mayor, council, and audience, this is just an update over the last two weeks. I've also sent it to the graphic, to our radio station, and to the Chamber and Downtown Coalition. Again, pretty busy couple of weeks, a lot of it around affordable housing. Doug and I met with the Amhill Housing Authority to provide some insights about owners and properties that might be possible for different kinds of partnerships. The last time, we talked about maybe something with the veterans, and the housing authority has asked us to go with them to the Veterans Administration, see if there's some funding that we can do with them. The other ones were just, with Doug's experience, looking at where we have vacant lots, how this new opportunity fund will allow new funds to come south of Highway 99. We believe that there's some possibilities for partnerships in doing some affordable housing. So, that was a significant part of it. We also heard earlier about fiber and about that, you heard that franchise of electric light wave come in. Well, Sherwood, the city of Sherwood has its own utility for fiber, and they are already in Newburgh. Their biggest clients are the Allison and ADEC, and I believe they're still with Providence. And they have a fiber network here. So, one of our goals has been to see how we can expand fiber and broadband in town. There's a lot of things that are changing with that. We look for both some city services, but also of where other businesses might be able to utilize them. And specifically, the school district, who's looking to cut their monthly cost with their fiber service. So, we're very hopeful about that, and we'll look at it for some of our opportunities, and that'll be part of the discussion next time on the dispatch, and whether it's standalone or not, it'll just be part of that discussion. Also accompanied the mayor, council president, Councilor Finley, and one of our planning commissioners, Pelts, of something that Doug got started here several years ago. I don't know how many years we're in it now?
Six.
So, six years of getting all of our students, our sixth graders at the Mountain View Middle School, to make presentations and really do some detailed planning and using a lot of tools like CAD to envision what would property adjoining the Allison look like, and what would the Butler property developing? So, they were very comprehensive, very grown-up, and they thought about a lot of things like providing affordable housing. They did research on the Internet, and it was just very impressive, and this just continues to go on of getting the students engaged. And maybe they will be Doug and Cheryl's replacement in another eight or nine years. We had the open house community visioning, we had the riverfront master plan over the last two weeks. You'll hear next week about emergency preparedness, and we are using Jay and Lindsay there to work on getting us grants to boost up like this building. In August and September, we'll be out of here, because this building will be under construction for the seismic upgrade. Well, Public Works, and with the two of them, have submitted other grants to Homeland Security and with the county to try to get us funding for, a couple of them are for fuel storage. If we have, again, a disaster and portable trailers, we can keep generators going through town. So, it's out trying to get some additional money to come in. There's several things are in the report. There's interest in putting a mural on the side of the library annex, so Leah is taking that effort to the cultural district board. Can't remember which counselor has the cultural district, so it'll be a proposal there, and looking at potentially, you know, maybe a large new mural coming up. And there's also some other interesting thing. One that particularly striking is Jay has been interested in two sides of it. One is with the legislature, with Representative Post of a bill to go forward of getting credit for, and those of the counselors that went on Capitol Day that were aware of this, of getting a credit for regular citizens putting emergency preparedness, gets, maybe getting a tax credit for that. So that's actually, they're working on a bill that would go for that. And then the other one is, you remember almost a year ago, that we had a challenge with Portland Cement about payment of water bills there? One of the things in just engaging with them, that Finance found out, was that they'd love to use our reused water, but it's too, the temperature is too high. It would react negatively with cement. So Jay is talking to the state through the local solutions group to maybe get Oregon State or University of Oregon engineers to figure out a way of how we can reduce, in a very cost-effective way, reduce the temperature so that one of our major businesses here can use our reused water, which is right next to their site. So, that's it, Mr. Mayor, and the mayor is leaving for next week, and he can cover it for DC.
Yes, questions?
Yeah. Joe, I just had a question about, you're talking about the request for funds for fuel reserves. I love the idea of being prepared. I'm wondering if there's any effort in thinking about investing in electric vehicles, or possibly doing EV hookups running off of solar, also thinking about kind of being prepared for emergencies, et cetera?
Have we done a whole lot on it? No. Do we have the opportunity to do that? And is that a perfect thing for the next discussion with council about resiliency and the use? We did, we have asked Waste Management about their natural gas, of what their schedule, and they said, we're not on a schedule to replace it. But that, there are charging stations in town now, a few of them, but the whole concept is a worthy discussion. It'd be great for council to weigh in and say, you know, where's that sit on your priorities?
Other questions for the city manager?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, Stephanie.
The Design Star presentations were amazing. They were so good. I was so impressed with Doug's work with them, leading up to it and all of that. I'm wondering if it would be a possibility in the future to have maybe one or two of those groups come to a city council meeting and do their presentations for the entire council and for anybody who's in the audience?
Counsel, yes, we do that. So I've actually emailed the lead teacher, and that gave him the dates of April 1, April 15, or May 6. And so they'll pick, and they usually bring three to five of the groups. In your regular business section, they'll take, you know, a half hour, 45 minutes, and walk through their presentations.
Okay. Anything else for the city manager? Now, hearing none. All right. Let's see. So we've got public comments at this point. These are general public comments for items that are not specifically on the agenda. So, first up, Mr. Corey Zilsdorf, please. Did I butcher your last name, Corey?
No, you got it.
All right. Button to your right, and please identify by stating your name.
Good evening, council. My name is Corey Zilsdorf. I'm a Realtor in town, and I own a company called New Door Realty. I came tonight just to hear about council priorities, and I wanted to voice my two cents. I've lived in my, in this, in the area, in town since 1976. My family has a farm out in, off of Wilsonville Road. I've watched the town grow, and I'm passionate about change and what's happening. It's exciting. I think as far as the number one priority we need to consider when, from a council standpoint, is the economic development, the four pillars of activity, industrial, commercial, business development, tourism, hospitality. I think one way you could, because it's oftentimes these, if that's your top priority, to keep your top priority, to keep it at the top of mind, is to create a statement, a vision statement, like a litmus test, that every decision is made upon. So it's right at the top of your wall, and you see it, and you have to respond to it every time you have a vote, or you have a decision to make. We are at a, I'm going to, yeah, we're kind of at a, I think we're at a crossroads in our community. We can determine whether we want to be a bedroom community, or we can have a vision with Yamhill County in general and embrace what we have here, which is very special. And that litmus test, I think, is something that we can use, that can create that vision for what we want to see our community be. There's, the second council priority I see is affordable housing. And that's not, when we talk about affordable housing, it always comes back to what can we build that's affordable? And there's so many things you can do right now around existing building codes and zoning restrictions, and that can be done pretty quickly to address affordable housing. I think the lodging tax that we have, that, you think about where that goes. So you've got somebody coming to town, they're spending time in our nice B&amp;Bs or hotels, but who's serving them? They're minimum wage workers. They're people that can barely afford housing, oftentimes. Why don't they have access to that tourism tax? I know there's legal, I know there's other things around it. We talk about the structural deficit, and it's very easy to pinpoint where you can cut things, and you can do this and that. But if you look at the big picture, you've got to ask yourself, I'm in real estate, so I say, you know, why do you want to move here? Or why are you leaving? The school had, you know, the school district has had some big surprises in the past couple of years with hundreds of kids leaving, and we've had to make these really quick cuts in the schools that have alarmed families. I think you have to ask, why are they leaving? And what's, I mean, you have to have... I think you have to ask, why are they leaving and what's, I mean, you have to have a bigger discussion about it. A lot of it does come down to school performance. People move, look at, I'm gonna use another, I'm gonna use our neighbor, Sherwood. Incredible school performance. My wife's a teacher there. But it is, it is a reason we, I mean, it is a side reason, but maybe it's a reason that, that helps us get rid of that structural deficit, that if we can focus on that goal of school performance, then maybe it can help change our other issues. Because that's why people, people are looking for quality of life. They're looking for not only affordable housing, but affordable living in the town. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
All righty. Corey, thank you so much. All right, any questions for Mr. Zilsdorf? No, hearing none. Thank you. All right, next for public comment, and I neglected to mention, a five-minute limit is what we're looking for. Gabriel, is it Skulek? Did I, did I butcher it?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Button on the right, and please state your name with correct pronunciation.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
So my first name is Gabriel and the last name is Skulets. Doesn't look like them, that's it. I'm a Newburgh citizen since March 2017 and I moved here from the state of Washington. I'm here tonight to talk about how the city is still not, is still missing how they regulate tiny houses. I am planning on bringing a tiny house and park it on my property probably in May. It's under construction and it will be a tiny house on wheels in that category. And since I own a house, the house is 1,600 square feet and I would be there by myself. So I was looking at what my options were and one of the options is having a tiny house and the tiny house will be 160 square feet. So one thing is, it was already mentioned here a couple of times, affordable living. And then the other thing is climate footprint. Since the tiny house trend is around for some time, it's coming and I may be the first one who will bring a tiny house to the city limits. And the city is still not ready, but the state of Oregon is ready. There is a code that is already effective since September 20th, 2018. And it's up to the city, I would say, planning and building departments to adopt or at least consider this code as the tool, how the future tiny house owners could be regulated. It will make everything illegal. It covers every aspect of how to live in a tiny house and avoid any illegal activities. So that's my point tonight and I already had three meetings with the planning and building departments and they're, they are aware of the situation. Although the priorities currently, what they are working on, they are still not focused on tiny houses. So if I could get some attention for me and future owners of tiny houses tonight would be great.
Okay, well, I think you saw earlier in the presentation that we are, tiny homes are on the list for, for planning. And you probably know Doug Rux if you've talking to the folks in planning. So I, I'm not sure, I don't know Doug, what the regulation is in 2018. I'm not sure what that is because I know there was some confusion regarding the building codes covering tiny homes and that kind of thing. But I commend you for doing it. I think that's, I think that's awesome. Now can I ask you a question? Will it be auxiliary dwelling unit to the main house or what we do?
It would cancel everything about tiny house on wheels. When, when I showed up and I told them what I want to do, they would put me into the ADU category.
Right.
That would just make it an ADU, no longer flexible, more like RV-based unit that I can take for two, three weeks to the coast in the summertime if I want to.
Gotcha.
Bring it back for the rest of the year. But now with this code, it's called the REACH code, they have the flexibility. They don't need to use the ADU regulations and code and everything.
Okay. Questions or comments, folks? Well, I would hope you would stay in touch with the planning department and to try to, because as you saw, we had both RV parking and ADUs and tiny homes are all subjects that we're talking about. So I would hope that between the legislation that's winding through Salem and whatever we can do here locally, that we could address that. But, thank you. And I, Corey, I didn't mention this to you too, but there's a group that works outside of the city, so it's Housing Newburgh, and it's a group that tries to address these kinds of things for presentation. I just added Corey's name to the list the other day. If we could add your name, I would love to get your input on tiny homes.
No problem.
Okay, that'd be fantastic. Okay, thank you so much. Greatly appreciate it. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a public hearing. I will remind you folks, this is, as I was tutored this morning by our legal counsel, this, this is a quasi judicial hearing. In this case, this one is slightly different in that it's actually land that's in the county, so we are here to make a recommendation to the county regarding this partition. All right, now let me follow my rules. Truman, keep me honest on the rules. Here we go. All right, the public hearing is now open. The purpose is to discuss resolution 2019-3538, a resolution recommending that Yamhill County approve a proposed partition at 28800 Northeast Bell Road. And the, the testimony procedure, public testimony, five-minute limits, proponents, opponents, and undecided, and then principal proponent rebuttal. First though, the staff report. And there must be something I forgot.
Step two is call for abstentions by the sex party contact and objections to jurisdiction followed by the announcements.
Patrick?
I've always wanted to say this. I've driven by the site and drawn no conclusions.
Nice, thank you for that. I used to live on Bell Road, does that matter? I'll just say it, not any longer. That's my only contact otherwise. Okay, announcements.
Announcements. Certain announcements are required before the commencement of a quasi judicial land use hearing. This hearing deals with the land use decision of a recommendation to Yamhill County regarding approval of a partition within, within the county, but also within the Newburgh Urban Reserve area. The announcement required by the Oregon Revised Statutes, ORS 197.763, is as follows. The applicable substantive criteria for the decision are listed in Exhibit C to the Resolution 3538. Testimony arguments and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described above or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation that you believe applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. The applicant who has the burden approved may have at least seven days after the record is closed to submit final written argument. At the close of the testimony portion of the hearing, the applicant will have to decide if the applicant wishes to submit further written argument. ORS 197763 defines argument as assertions and analysis regarding the satisfaction or violation of legal standards or policy believed relevant by the proponent to this, to a decision. Argument does not include facts. Evidence means facts, documents, data, or other information offered to demonstrate compliance or non-compliance with the standards believed by the proponent to be relevant to the decision. If the applicant wishes to make a submittal, no further deliberation shall take place tonight. If the applicant waives that right, the council may proceed with deliberation. And that is the initial quasi judicial announcements.
Thank you. Now the staff report. Cheryl.
Good evening, councillors. My name is Cheryl Kane, Senior Planner with the City of Newburgh. What you have for you this evening is consideration of a resolution for recommendation for a partition that's in Yamhill County at 28800 Northeast Bell Road, which is outside of the city limits. It is located within the, one of the urban reserve areas for the city of Newburgh and that is an area that is not currently within our urban growth boundary, but with expansion of the urban growth boundary in the future, that area is likely to be part of that urban growth boundary expansion and is one of the areas where the city would look to, to be able to accommodate future growth for the city. So this is a copy of the tentative partition plat that was presented to the city. Actually, we got the application on January 24th and then this application is for a division of the parcel, which again is located at 28800 Northeast Bell Road, to be partitioned into three parcels. And so it's this, so there's kind of two parcels here that make up this large rectangle, but it's only the rectangle that's on the west that is part of the three, three lot partition. And so there is an existing home on future parcel two and then parcels one and three, there will be homes constructed on those, on those parcels in the future if the partition is approved. And so this looks, one of the requirements for, so again, I guess I'll go back a little bit. The reason why it's becoming, it's coming to the city council, even though it's outside of the city, city limits, is that the city and Yamhill County have an agreement called the Newburgh Urban Area Growth Management Agreement. So anytime there is any sort of development that's proposed within urban reserve area, urban growth boundary, or in what's called an area of influence, which is a mile around the city, then the city should have a chance to review that proposal and offer a recommendation based on criteria that are laid out within that agreement between the city and the county. And so again, because this is located in the urban reserve area, this is part of that agreement. And so the criteria really have to do, not with things like lot size or traffic or street improvements, those would all be reviewed by Yamhill County. The criteria have to do with, if we allow this partition to happen, then will it prevent us from accommodating future growth on this site? And so the, part of the, part of the seminal requirements is this future development plan, which has been provided by the applicant, which shows how the site would develop in the future and then also the site to the east would develop in the future. And you could have streets that meet the right-of-way requirements for the city, which is 60, 60 feet, would be extended through the site and to the adjacent sites. And so where the future homes would be, that would be constructed as part of the partition, where those would be located. And then that way it kind of gives you an idea of how that, that site could be, could accommodate urban level development in the future. And so staff has reviewed this future development plan. Again, this is one way that they could develop it in the future. It's, it's not, their applicant is not held to this particular future development plan. But it does show that the proposed partition for the county is not preventing urban level development for the city in the future if it becomes part of the city of Newburgh. And so based on the criteria, staff is recommending that city council approve the resolution 2019-3538, recommending that Yamhill County approve the requested partition at 28800 Northeast Bell Road. That concludes the staff report. Are there any questions?
I guess I have one and I, I think because we, NewMac or the, the committee that oversees that, is this one and the same thing? Is this a different thing? This is a different group? Okay.
No, so Doug Rux.
Thank you, Doug.
Community Development Director. NewMac is an organization that's made up of city, county, and citizens. And what they look at is urban growth boundary expansion applications. This is an agreement between, as Cheryl was saying, this area of influence includes land that are outside the city but within the UGB and stuff in the urban reserve to make sure that what's being proposed from the county's land use action doesn't preclude us from being able to urbanize that area within an urban reserve area in the future. So again, council holds this hearing, you make a recommendation, it goes back to the county, the county then has to go through the balance of the land use process. So you're not making a decision, you're only making a recommendation.
And I guess just a follow-up question. So if we're talking about the future urbanization and we have 5,000 square foot minimum lots in our one, in our jurisdiction, how does that then jive with what the counties are? Or does it not? It just, at some later date, it could be redeveloped? Is that the thought?
Yes, and right now the, the current zoning for the county is VLDR1, which is Very Low Density Residential, which is one dwelling unit per acre. So the sites will be quite large. And so the, the applicant, you know, shows how those future homes for the partition would be located. And then that way it would still be able, we would be able to accommodate, like you said, smaller lots in the future at whatever the zoning is for that area.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Patrick?
Ah, here we go. So again, just treat me like I'm an idiot because that's pretty much accurate. What I'd like to ask about is resources in that area. So I'm thinking about the area between Newburgh and Dundee and where we have a lot of development out there and people have city water out there. And they have no interest in annexing really, if they were in the urban growth boundary. What my question is, is if we do this, when it comes to resources like transportation, SDCs, water, those types of issues, how does that all get worked out when this parcel comes in? Providing city water, then, I'm, I'd just like to know the process of when this, if we do this and it's approved by the county at a future date, 10 years, five years, 15 years, whatever, how does that all jive with what we do as far as resource allocation goes?
Doug Rux. So first step would have to be an urban growth boundary expansion to include it. And when we do that, we'll look at the issues about infrastructure and what can be served to be able to annex into the city. So let's say it's brought into the urban growth boundary sometime in the future. Urban reserve area is one of those first areas that you look at. And so let's say it's brought into the urban growth boundary. Then to get urban scale development sometime in the future, you have to be annexed to the city. So if you're not contiguous, you cannot annex. So there you have this long time horizon. So let's say somewhere down the road, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, that area is in urban growth boundary, it's now adjacent to the city limits, then the property owner could request an annexation to the city. So it would follow normal annexation process. So they would have to show that they can provide or extend sewer and water services within a three-year period. So, and this is all the way up at the very northeast corner of this urban reserve area, so it could be considerable time. I should step back. If it's brought into the urban growth boundary, then we have to go back and we have to update all of our master plans. Transportation, sewer, water, and stormwater. Transportation, sewer, water, and storm water. And how all of this urban growth boundary area or expansion could be served in the future. So you know, you start with, let's say, we know going up Zimry is that there's a booster pump station down near Mountain View Drive. Someday, there'd be a reservoir up on Bell Road. There would be a line that would go from that booster pump station up to the reservoir. And then eventually, as development would occur going north, you'd have lines extended. So you know, eight-inch, 10-inch water lines, eight-inch, 10-inch sewer lines. It just depends upon the density of development that would occur. Eventually, we'd get to the property, and they would have to extend sewer and water to get to the property. And then they have to stub it to the adjacent property. Call it to and through. So let's say that the property to the west of this one is annexed first, and then this property is. Well, they'd have to extend sewer and water and so forth to the east to the next property. So it leapsfrog until you get out to the edge of the urban growth boundary again. But we're talking about things happening way in the future, and there would be a lot of planning things that would have to occur in the future to make that happen.
Follow on. So in that area, as you guys know, I have concerns about transportation issues up there. And especially with different intersections in that sector of the city, or outside the city, I guess. What kind of, how do we balance the extended growth of developments like this versus the transportation adequacy or capacity on those streets? And so is the county going to do a transportation study? Or will the developer do a trip check? Or you know, how does this impact the local transportation system?
So Doug Ruck's again. I would start with, it's the county's process and their criteria. So here, what you have is a parcel being proposed to be divided into three parcels. So there's already a house on one parcel. So if you take the average of 10 trips a day, you add two additional parcels, you've got an additional 20 trips a day. Then typically, if, when cities or counties look at traffic studies, they look at the PM peak hour. So here, you could have traffic going north, south, east, and west in some direction. Some percentage of those trips might end up at College and Bell Road in the future. A partition's not going to be, in my opinion, is not going to be enough to trip that. If they were in the city, we would go through our process. If you're creating more than 40 PM peak hour trips, you have to do a traffic impact analysis. We work with the applicant to identify which intersections need to be analyzed. Bell Road is a county road. College is a state highway. Then it takes coordination between the county, with the county, and with the state about any necessary improvements. So I'll use as an example, the annexations that have occurred up off of North Valley Road between Chehalum and College Street. Transportation analysis had to be done. We looked at intersections at Chehalum, College, Foothills Drive, and College. There's a few others that were in there. And looked at what the level of service was, and did it change a functional classification of the roadway? Well, here, in this situation is, if it's ever brought into the urban growth boundary, we have to amend our transportation system plan. So then we would look at it and say, okay, with development and the type of density we think is going to be happening that's out there, how many trips are going to be generated? Does that, then we have to assign a functional classification to those roadways. But again, those are all things a number of years down the road.
And then when we do the transportation system upgrade, we also update the SDCs to help cover the cost of the projects outlined in the transportation-
Every time we update our TSP, we go back and relook at our SDCs.
Thank you. See, that wasn't painful.
Okay. One thing, I did receive a question, actually, that I will ask to enter it into the record. So should the Bell Road developer have to pay SDCs for future infrastructure needs? Water reservoirs above the site? Shouldn't they have to pay for that at least? I believe the reservoir has, is need earthquake improvements. So that into the record. So comment, staff, on that question?
The short of the answer is no. They're not in the city limits. They're not subject to our SDCs. If they were in our city in the future and development was proposed, then yes, there would be the appropriate SDC charges established, whatever those numbers are at that particular point in time. We don't have an SDC for, specifically for water reservoir seismic upgrades. What we have is we have a transportation sewer, water, and storm SDC. Those go into the pot of funds. And then the council will see annually a capital improvement program that's submitted that uses those SDC funds in order to continue to upgrade infrastructure for future development. So they pay their proportional share at that time. But they don't at this point because it's out in the county.
Thank you. Yes, Lisby.
I'm just wondering what the, what's currently being done on this property? Is it a farm, or is it just a house? Is there anything, house land being used?
The applicant may have better information than I do, but as I understand it, it's just a single-family home.
Patrick.
I hope you guys don't groan. But I have a philosophical question for Doug. Seeing a land use issue like this come before us, is this a symptom of us not having enough buildable land inside of Newburgh? And is that why we're seeing these types of things? Or is this just perfect storm of availability and a builder willing to do it, and let's go?
It is a consequence of the agreement, the Urban Growth Management Agreement that the county and the city had entered into historically. So the last time the council member saw one of these was off of Chehalum Drive. So it was a piece of property that was in the urban growth boundary but outside of the city, and they wanted to partition it so they could create another lot. And we went through the same process. We had them do a shadow plat to show how they could urbanize that in the future. So they took the lot, divided it into two. Then they broke it down to show us in a finer-grain detail, could you add additional houses onto that property in the future? We did one for a winery off of Zimry in the past as well. We did one for an ice cream vendor off of Chehalum Drive in the past. So this is not the first time the city's done it. They've done this for many years. This one just happens to be, it's a much larger parcel. It's in the urban reserve. It's up at the very northeast corner of an urban reserve. And by the agreement, there are criteria, we have to bring it forward to you to make a recommendation back to the county.
All right. Other questions of staff? Nope, hearing none. Thank you, Cheryl. All right. I do have one public comment from a proponent, Mark Wilkuts. Come on up, the button to the right, and state your name. You have five minutes.
My name's Mark Wilkuts, and I'm the owner of Sigmund Holdings. I believe, and I may be wrong, but I believe that it's zone VLDR-2.5 minimum, two and a half acres.
Cheryl.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. Yes, it is VLDR-2.5.
Okay. So our minimum lot size is going to, well, we have to, in that zone, we have to average two acres. But overall, we can't be under two acres when you average it out. We've done these projects for years. Hidden Meadows, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that neighborhood. That was one of them. And then I believe that for a while, the city didn't do the public hearings. And then it's come back now. But you know, a two-and-a-half-acre lot, there's a lot of room for redevelopment in the future. So otherwise, you know, we concur with staff. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Questions for Mr. Wilkuts? Hearing none. Thank you.
Oh, do you want to know what the existing house is used for?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, Lisby did want to know that. Yes, yes.
Currently, the existing house has been remodeled into a wine tasting facility. It's about 4,000 square feet. And that, one of the things that we can do going forward with the county is to maintain that as a wine tasting facility as long as we meet the county requirements. And we'd have to plant grapes and that type of stuff around it. We're kind of leaving that up in the air right now to see what a future buyer would want. Maybe they want to, you know, put it back to a house. But that's what it's owned right, or that's what it's being used for right now.
Any other questions? No, hearing none. Letters or, public agency letters or comments, Sue? Did I cut you off?
No, I just-
Oh, I thought Truman was giving me the signal. No, all right.
I don't know what Truman's doing. Last meeting, I bribed him with gummy bears, but I didn't bring them this time. I have not received any written comments or testimony for the record for this hearing.
Okay. All right. With that, we're going to close public testimony. And the city attorney's legal announcements.
So I was just going to inquire of the applicant whether you're waiving the seven days. You have a right to submit any additional argument. You have seven days to do that if you want. If you do that, then the council can't make a decision tonight. If you waive that, then the council can proceed towards a decision tonight. So the applicant indicated that they waive. If a decision is not made tonight and continued to another date, the record could be reopened at that later date by motion of the council. Therefore, do not assume no further evidence will be taken. If the decision is made tonight, the council has the authority to reconsider the decision following proper procedure. This motion to reconsider is usually required to be made at the next meeting of the city council. The fact that the council could reconsider their decision does not affect the length of time for an appeal of that decision. And that's the closing legal announcement.
Right. Final comments from staff? And your recommendation, Cheryl.
Thank you again, Cheryl Caines. There are no final comments from staff after the proponent's testimony. Basically, it's still, the staff recommendation is to approve Resolution 2019-3538, recommending Yamhill County approve the requested partition at 288-00-Northeast Bell Road.
Further questions of staff? Okay, thank you, Cheryl. All right. Deliberation, folks. Comments? Anyone? How's about a motion? Mike?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mer. I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2019-3538.
And we have a second. Further discussion? Okay. Any other legal requirements? We're ready for the vote. All right. All in favor of Resolution 2019-3538, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the motion passes. All right. Moving right along. All right. We are on to Resolution 2019-3533, and this is Visit Newburgh.
Thank you, Mayor Doug Ruck's, Community Development Director. So I'm back in front of you again concerning Visit Newburgh. As noted in your RCA, back on December 17th of 2018, you opened an administrative hearing on an agreement with Visit Newburgh. There were a lot of questions that were, came about at that particular point in time. And that decision on that agreement was tabled to January 22nd. On January 22nd, that agreement was tabled to May 20th of 2019. You had asked the TLT Committee to come back with a recommendation on funding allocation for the startup costs for Visit Newburgh. So the TLT Marketing Subcommittee met on January 28th and developed the startup costs. And those are included as attachment one in your packet. Subsequent to the TLT Marketing Subcommittee meeting, Visit Newburgh had already filed its Articles of Incorporation in December of 2018. But they held their organizational meeting where they elected their board members, elected who was on the executive committee for that, and also discussed the Visit Newburgh funding allocation. So that then brought us back to a work session that was held on February 4th between the city council and the chair and the vice chair of Visit Newburgh. And they came back with some suggested modifications to that initial funding allocation whereby they added, instead of what we would, the marketing subcommittee looked at as a four-month salary and benefits for the executive director. They came back with a 12-month, and they shared with you that would help in their recruitment. They also came back with some modifications on some of the funding allocation for some administrative costs for legal expenses and so forth, which were tied to legal counsel and outside counsel to get their 501(c)(6) designation. So we're back with that. So you have attached to your resolution and/or the bigger typed text is attachment two in your packet. So where we were originally at with the marketing subcommittee was an initial funding allocation of $150,000. Post the work session with Visit Newburgh, that number went up to $250,000. So that covers those additional costs that I mentioned earlier. Then the question gets to, well, is there $250,000 to provide this initial allocation for the startup costs? And yes. In our budget today, we have the $250,000. At the end of this fiscal year, end of June, we estimate we're going to have about $499,000, maybe a little less than that because we are covering the cost of the legal expenses for the establishment of Visit Newburgh. So we talked about that in February at the work session as well. So we've been paying Mr. Bridges for the organization, and then he's working with another outside counsel on the 501(c)(6). And so we have that obligation. So it might reduce that $499 down a little bit. We also noted in the report that we'll be back in front of you with modification between the City of Newburgh and the Chehalum Valley Chamber of Commerce for their contract. So in the meantime, they are doing the marketing. There was about $40,000 was there. Marketing, we talked about releasing those funds. And I've talked with Shannon, yeah, verbally, use those funds as Visit Newburgh gets itself established. So with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2019-3533.
Questions of staff? Seeing none. We're all set. All right. Public comment. It looks like I've got three familiar faces for comments for Visit Newburgh. Would you like to do this together or individually? Or how would you like to do?
We're proposing that the chair and the vice chair, we can come up and-
Sure, please do. Sure, please do. Step forward. And button to the right-hand side, state your names. And we look forward to hearing from you all. Dennis Lewis.
And Rob Felton. I prepared a few thoughts. Just to give you a very quick update, we, as Doug aptly described, we formed the organization January 30th. We're pursuing nonprofit status with the help of the city funding the John Bridges. We're working on finalizing bylaws. Board members have gone to McMinnville to visit with Visit McMinnville and their people. In fact, I think there's another potential trip tomorrow. We've put together a job description, which we're hoping to be able to send out very, very soon, and will probably even be asking for help in distribution and getting it out to networks of people who would be interested in such a job. We're meeting again this week, and I'm, my understanding, we have about six potential applicants. And I think we're available for your questions if you have any.
Questions, folks? How's about a hearty thank you? How's about that? Thank you so much. Thank you. Right? All right. All right, hearing no questions. Shannon, did you want to address us, or you? Yes? All right, step on up.
Shannon Buckmaster, Shaheenland Valley Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for your support for several years of patience while we learn how to manage our community resources on behalf of tourism and marketing together as a team, as actually several different stages of several different teams. This feels like a great place to arrive at. I simply offer my support of passing or receiving the resolution to release the full $250,000. And I can further say that the chamber has already made preparations to fully receive and be, begin supporting Visit Newburgh effective March 1st, but I'm already working with Visit Newburgh through the hiring process as well to make sure that they have the appropriate staffing support, facility support, and transfer of institutional knowledge. So, we're well on our way to being a good steward of the funds that we're asking you to release, but also providing our community with a really solid, intentional, well-qualified Director of Tourism and Marketing. I offer myself for any questions to the council, to city staff, or to the mayor.
Questions of Shannon. Patrick?
I think I'm going to echo what Mayor Rogers said as a hearty thank you. I have seen other processes surrounding tourism lodging tax dollars and relationship between cities and government agencies and chambers get blown up over these types of issues, and the amount of community leadership and grace the chamber has shown during this whole process, even with people asking maybe one or two too many questions. I personally appreciate it, and it shows me the true value of the chamber and this community and the fact that you guys are great community partners. So, a hearty thank you from me.
Thank you, Councilor Johnson, and your questions are always welcome.
Questions to her, not necessarily questions generally, though. All right. Any other questions for Shannon? No, thank you very much. All right. Final staff report and recommendation, please.
So, Doug Rux again, and Counselor, I enjoy your 101 questions. Just nothing to really add other than to remember that in your resolution, there is an agreement that has to be entered in your authorizing the city manager. The other piece is, we want to make sure that Visit Newburgh has to follow ORS 320.300, so that's on how you expend tourism dollars as a tourism promotion organization. So, with that, staff is recommending that council adopt Resolution Number 2019-3533.
Additional questions for staff? All right, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Rux. Further discussion? I'll entertain a motion. There we go, Denise.
It's been a long time coming, but we're going to do it. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2019-3533.
Second.
And second by Patrick. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Resolution 2019-3533 signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the resolution passes. Thank you. Thank you very much. All righty, moving right along. Resolution 2019-3534, Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Development Plan.
Thank you, Mayor Doug Rux again. So, back. Hi. Good to see all of you. Haven't seen you since 5:00. Back in February 2017, Yamhill County began the process of updating their transit plan. So, Counselor Johnson participated in that. Counselor S. participated. City Manager Hannan participated in that process. And in your RCA, I don't want to go through all of the acronyms, but there were a lot of different organizations that touched the transit plan during its development. They had community outreach opportunities. There were things that City Manager and I attended here in Newburgh, trying to get input from our local residents. In October of 2018, the Transit Area Board and the county approved the Transit Area Plan. Within that plan, I kind of listed out the goals because there are hundreds of pages to read if you'd like to put yourself to sleep with all the documents that we deal with, is, I just kind of listed out the goals, the six primary goals that are embedded within the plan itself. One of the things that's important, though, and we included in this resolution, is we were going through the final review of the document, that there are items identified that the city needs to update. And so, there was an analysis that was done by the consultant for the plan, looking at our comprehensive plan and how it aligned with the new transit plan. And so, we've noted that there are some comprehensive plan amendments that we need to do to our text to make the two documents align. We know that there are some development code because there's also a matrix in there about things that we need to update in our code to be able to align with the transit plan. And there's even some drawings in there about bus pullouts and so forth, which relate to Public Works, our engineering division, about updating their Public Works Design and Construction standards. So, this resolution actually does two things. One, it's asking you to accept the transit plan as the transit plan for Newburgh, but it's also initiating a comprehensive plan and development code amendment and having Public Works evaluate what they need to update in their Public Works Design and Construction standards. As we always say, when you initiate comp plan and development code amendments, you're just initiating the process. We would put together the body of work. It would go back to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission then would formulate a resolution and the recommendation to the council, and then the council would make the final decision on comp plan and development code amendments. And that is all I have.
All right, questions, folks? Yep, Lisby.
Sorry. I have a couple of questions. The first on, in Volume 1, page 125, I was wondering about, talking about generating revenue, encouraging usage, changing culture, addressing affordability. I'm wondering about if there's been thought to or discussion about partnering with local schools, businesses, retirement homes, et cetera, to provide passes with their employees, students, et cetera?
So, Joe Hannan, your city manager. The answer is yes, but is there agreement on that?
Of course.
No? Are they, is the system really strapped with coming up with funds? Yes. There's been talk about, and this rolls into the bypass of a transportation district, which is, unfortunately, while we're sitting here, I was emailing another group in town at Providence that has a group of volunteers that's trying to do some volunteer work to maybe even supplement transit to provide more affordable. Denise has been working with the group around the name of what, Vida? That is looking, so, the answer is yes, it's being considered. Is there anything very serious so far? No. Is there potential? Yes. For system viability, even though there's a lot more money coming from the state, something's going to have to happen with fares and outside money. The most obvious one that I'm not suggesting here is payroll tax around us for places I can be in, and other folks.
Follow-up?
Yep.
So, to be clear, I actually was asking if we're thinking about partnering with, like, for-profit folks for them to be subsidizing their people so that we could have it be more affordable and more accessible, but it wouldn't be on taxpayers' dime necessarily?
And the answer is yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Answer is yes.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I have another question. I, this may be a weird question, but on 115 of Volume 1, I'm just wondering why Grand Ron is taking on such a huge hit financially than everyone else, especially since they take on like 1.3% of usage and we're at like 30% or something?
Part of the issue with Grand Ron is they get some separate money and funding, so I think that's taking advantage of other federal assistance specifically to tribes.
Okay.
But they have, they have a seat at the table.
And they're just generally awesome, apparently, financially.
Yes, they are.
Great. Okay, just wondering, and then final question, I'm just wondering where the proposed Newburgh Transit Center, are you going to talk about that, where we're looking at?
So, Jay and I have looked at about, we looked at the 13-half block area between the western, all within the couplet. We looked one street offside of the couplet, and we discounted all those, but it's from the sign on the west to the flagpole. We're down to three of them. What I put in my message today, we're meeting with the property owners on those streets, so then I prefer to, after I get feedback from them, come in. They'll be pretty obvious locations, and what's being proposed is no building. It would be likely a street, one side of the street being painted whatever they do, yellow or red, and we need to accommodate two full-size buses and one smaller bus on that. And so, we have, have the proposals. Jay has done up some Photoshop, and we're going to meet with people this week. And then we'll come back to the council.
Elise.
I might have missed this. Has there been any, is there conversation or, to go to Providence?
Of the four routes, yes. Yes. And it's, now it looks like the one that was approved by them is the Cloverleaf. It would come from the Transit Center and getting to Providence would go from the Transit Center to the pool, the pool to Safeway, the Safeway to Providence, Providence to, no, Safeway to Fred Meyer, Fred Meyer to Providence, Providence to PCC, and back.
And there will be bus shelters, correct? That's a part of the program?
Yes.
Okay. One other question, I guess, by approving this, it doesn't take transit off the priority list, does it? You still have to do comprehensive plan stuff and everything else? Okay, all right.
Doug Rux again. So, as we talked about in work session on priorities, we had transit was on there, and we identified that we've got these comp plan, development code, and public works design and construction standard updates and modifications we have to go through. So, we've got to work that into our work program with the other activities. So, I can't give you a date specifically when anything's going to come back to you, but hopefully, it'll be before the end of 2019.
Okay, very good. Darn, I was hoping that we could have crossed it off, because, anyway, just, it's not on the list of the, of the proposed ones, so, anyway, so it'll-
And Mayor, it was on the list because I was hoping to roll it into, like, economic development downtown strategy.
Okay, got it. All right, very good. All right, any other questions for staff? Patrick?
So, just to kind of give the state a play a little bit, so this is basically going to change our development codes to allow different bus shelters, different bus stops, have it match up with the, the plan that the transit folks have put together. And they're getting state money to start this Cloverleaf. The reason I'm saying all this is that in Camby, when I was over there, we separated from TriMet, and we set up a similar system with a Cloverleaf. And we also put in a employer tax like TriMet did. It was a lot lower because smaller system. And here, we're getting basically the same thing, thanks to the state transportation package that was passed. So, I want to set expectations that this is very much a shoestring budget kind of system. It's going to be way better than we had before, but I hope people don't expect this to be a TriMet-level kind of transit system. That's not what we're going to get. And if, if we do want additional connectivity, that's going to have to come with more resources somewhere, whether that's an employment tax county-wide or, you know, whatever that looks like. So, just wanted to kind of set the stage.
Patrick, and thank you for your service on this, this particular committee, and at least now, right? So, thank you. All right, any other questions for staff? Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. Do I have any further discussion about Resolution 2019-3534? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Ooh, nice. Lisby?
I'd like to make an motion to adopt Resolution Number 2019-3534.
And Patrick seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion. All in favor of Resolution 2019-3534, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, the resolution passes. Thank you. And now, the NOFA for Newburgh Affordable Housing. And hey, what do you know, it's Doug Rux.
Late-night talk show host. Very, very late. Thank you, Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So, this is the annual Notice of Funding Availability from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Normally, we do this in the fall, but in discussions with the Affordable Housing Commission and trying to work through the work program and what to focus on, they ask to delay it and do it in the second half of the year. So, we've been through with the commission for the NOFA. They've looked at all the information. They've looked, we did not change anything in the scoring criteria. We just updated the dates in the notices that get posted and then that go into the graphic. I think really what's of note is, is that when this fund was originally established, it had $75,000. And where we started at the beginning of this fiscal year, we had a little over $60,000 available. In the policies and procedures that the council has adopted for this, there's actually a breakdown. So, 15% is held in contingency, 25% can be used for grants, time-sensitive grants, and then the balance can be used for loans. And so, this is really going out for the loans. The grant is something we just post up on the website, and people can apply, be able to do that. So, given those breakdowns, we only have $31,981 available this fiscal year. With this, given that May 31st would be the closing date if anybody wanted to apply for a loan, and I should say, no one has yet applied for a loan since this program has been established, we have done two different grants, is that the $31,981 is actually, we'll re-budget into next, into the 1920, because by the time we review applications, if any are submitted, that then has to come back to council. It won't all happen by June 30th. It'll roll into the next fiscal year. But I did want you to know, we do have the $32,000. It's there, and it's available. With that, that's all I have.
And, and did you say that the, the grant program's up and running now?
Well, no, I have to post it up on the website.
Oh, that's right. That's right, I knew that, actually. I did know that. Thank you. All right, any questions of staff? So, basically, this is a renewal of a program that was in existence, and we're just rolling it over for the next time. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Rux? Hearing none? Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, I would move approving the content of the 2018-19 Notice of Funding Availability for Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund as shown in Attachment 1, and authorize staff to proceed with notification and publication of the NOFA with a May 31st, 2019 application deadline.
Perfect. And we have a second with, from Mike. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the 2018-19 NOFA for the Newburgh Affordable Housing Trust Fund signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, that passes, and I think that's it, right? Anything else, folks, for the good of the order this evening? Anyone? This is your time. No? No? Motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.
I think it's really hard on us.
Are ya?